The July 17th meeting of the Eden Prairie City Council will now come to order. I rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to make an invitation to the public to participate in open podium. It's an opportunity for Eden Prairie residents to address the city council on issues related to Eden Prairie city government. Before each council meeting, those are typically the first and third Tuesdays of each month. The time period I'm talking about is 6:30 to 6:55 in the council chambers. If you wish to speak, please contact the city manager's office at (952) 949-8412 by noon of the meeting date with your name, phone number, and your subject matter. If time permits, after scheduled speakers are finished, I will open the floor to unscheduled speakers. This portion of the meeting is not recorded or televised, and if you have any questions, again, please contact the city manager's office. The first thing we have on our agenda tonight is, in the area of proclamations and presentations, we have a Green Step City Award with Diana McKeon. Rick, did you want to add anything to that?
Mayor, just to mention that we've been an active participant for well over a year now in the statewide Green Step Cities program, which is our attempts and measures to move toward a more sustainable city and organization. So, we were awarded with the next step in that award at the recent League of Minnesota Cities Conference, and Diana's coming here, taking some time out to present us with that award tonight.
Hi, I'm Diana McKeon, and I work for the metro region of CERTS, Clean Energy Resource Teams. We're a statewide program that helps communities do energy efficiency and renewable energy project planning and implementation. We provide resources, technology, whatever it may be. We do a lot of work on the Green Step Cities program, and there were 47 cities as of the League of Minnesota Cities Conference that were Green Step Cities. We've got another one this week, North St. Paul, so we're in 48. And there was actually an article in MintPost on Monday about the Green Step Cities program. That's really interesting. I could forward it to Rick if you'd like. And so, I brought with the Step Two, and so, there's a little adhesive strip, so we need to peel off the plastic, and it can go right next to the block that I presented last year to you, Mayor, and that we can attach, so that you'll have Step Two. And the next step is Step Three. There are only four cities that got to Step Three this year, and that's the highest level at this point. Step Two is reaching half of the best practices required for your city category. Step Three is reaching all of those, and there were only four cities, again, that got to that level this year. We're diligently working on Step Four, because the Step Three cities are already asking what they need to do. They're ambitious. So, we're very, very happy to present the Step Two award to the council and mayor. I forgot my camera. So, I don't know if you have a photographer. I'm happy to do a kind of a ceremonial picture, and we like to put it on Facebook and the Green Step Cities website, so if you could get that to me, that'd be great.
How about if you come up here?
I'd be happy to.
About five counts.
I'd never get to go up there.
Okay. Do you guys want to stand up and come back here?
He's a clerk, Courtney.
Great. Thank you very much. So, congratulations. Thank you. Thank you very much. This really means a lot to us. All of us as council members are very concerned about the environment and about what we can do to be a greener city, and I really want to thank our staff a lot for all of the work that they have done to help us attain this award, and also, our Conservation Commission has an awful lot to do with this. They're the ones that brought it to our attention, and have made a lot of good decisions in terms of getting us this award, so thank you very much, Diane. Appreciate it. Next on the agenda, we have a contribution from Team Foxjet. Is Team Foxjet here?
No, Your Honor. I'll actually take this item if you don't mind. You're aware of a aquatic feasibility study that we've been working on, working to select a consultant, and that item is further down on your agenda tonight, but this obviously relates in that Team Foxjets would like to pledge $10,000 as a contribution towards that item. They've been a partner with us, obviously, for a long time at the community center using the pool, but we also incorporated them as a part of our selection committee. They sat in on the interviews with us as we looked at consultants for this project, and graciously came forward with $10,000 to help fund the study.
Well, that's fantastic. I'm very excited that we are looking at this, because I know it's been a big need in our community for a long time to have a better facility to accommodate all the needs of the community, and so, it's exciting to see this coming to fruition.
Great. Thank you. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution accepting the contribution?
I would move to adopt the resolution accepting the $10,000 contribution from Team Foxjet toward the aquatic feasibility study.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. That brings us to approval of the agenda and other items of business. There is a motion for approval. Any items to change?
Yes, Mayor, I have a few things. One is, we have an additional clerk's license for a temporary liquor permit is on Golden Rod. Another additional item for consent is an acquisition of an easement for Shady Oak Road Improvement, so that's moving, that process is moving along, so that's an additional item as well. And then, the third thing is a request to move up the ordinance and resolution related to the first and second reading of the cable franchise ordinance. If possible, we'd like to move that maybe just after consent, so it would be before public hearings. It would be our first major action item, I guess. We have, our attorney for the commission needs to be at another council meeting tonight as well. And then, also, we have agreed to allow anyone, even though it isn't listed as a public hearing, we've allowed anyone to speak on the issue tonight as well. And then, the last thing with that is an update on that franchise, is an updated Exhibit A, a list of the free cable service drops at the public buildings. That list has been updated and will be included in the franchise as well.
Okay. Thank you. Are those additions acceptable to those that made the motion? Yes, okay. There's a motion of second, Mr. Case.
And then, just to add, council member reports two items.
Okay. Anything else? Okay. All in favor of the agenda is amended.
Aye.
The motion passes. Is there a motion to approve the minutes of the council workshop held on Tuesday, June 19?
Prove approval. Second.
Any items to correct or question? All in favor? Aye. Motion passes. I'd like a motion for approval of the minutes from the council meeting held that same evening.
Second.
Any items to correct there? Hearing none? All in favor? Aye. Motion passes. Is there a motion for approval of the consent calendar as amended?
So moved.
Second.
Any items to pull for discussion? All in favor? Aye. The motion passes. That brings us to our first item, that is going to be the first reading of an ordinance granting a cable TV franchise to Comcast, and first reading of an ordinance repealing the cable TV regulatory ordinance, and this is moved up from further back in the agenda. So, Mr. Getchel.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. In addition, depending on how the item moves, then the second reading of that ordinance would be possibly considered tonight as well. We do have a rezoning, so we'll go back to the ordinances later. The cities, the five cities that are part of the Southwest Cable Commission have been negotiating and discussing for quite a period of time the renewal of our franchise with Comcast, and our own council member case serves as the chair of that commission, and we also have our attorney with the commission here as well to provide a presentation, so maybe we could have council member Case maybe tip the item off, and then, council member, council member, Mr. Grogan has a presentation as well.
Great. I've been the chair of the Southwest Cable Commission most of the last 14 years, I think, and particularly over the last two years when we've been working through the franchise, the new franchise agreement. We've been working on this with the five-city representatives for two years now, and again, the five cities that we partner with in our cable commission are Minnetonka, Edina, Hopkins, Richfield, and then Eden Prairie. And I wanted to, real quickly, without stealing Brian's thunder here, just to go through quickly and share what our goals for the franchise this time around were. Some of them are fairly basic, like just ensuring the regulatory ordinance is, everything's followed into a renewed franchise, ensuring that each city's individual code would be adhered to, streamlining some regulation in the Comcast franchise. Laws are changing constantly at a state and federal level. Addressing the digital migration, which has been a big technology deal as we've gone from analog over into digital. Increasing the level of capital support for our local channels. Maintaining our 5% franchise fee, which I believe with the city of Eden Prairie, I should know this number, but Mr. Getchel is at around $600,000 that we get through our 5% franchise fee, which, by the way, we put in generally to our general fund. Other cities do that differently. That money could be available for something else, but then it would draw off and need to be replaced by tax dollars, which every $300,000 is about a percent, so that represents about a 2% savings per year to the average taxpayer if we move our franchise money in. One of the goals early on was to eliminate the Comcast public access studio in Eden Prairie due to the limited usage by residents, but to actually increase the usage or increase the access that residents had to public access. And we are tripling the amount of money that's going into the potential to have public access. It's just that the fixed studio that Comcast runs will not be part of the final solution, but we absolutely could, if we wanted to, as a five-city group, recreate a studio elsewhere, or rent from Bloomington, or there's all kinds of options we can address later on. Improve customer service standards, renew for a 10-year term, and then adopt all the enforcement procedures and security to ensure compliance. So, in general, if you look at our 1997 franchise compared to our 2012, our belief is that this is the same with the franchise fees, but it's much stronger in our gross revenue definition. We're going from about 25 cents per subscriber that used to go right to Comcast for their studio. We're growing that to 60 cents and then to 65 cents the second half of the 10-year term. Our four PEG channels are going down to three, which means one of the educational channels is slated to not take place anymore, but there's a part of the franchise agreement that if the need is shown at 80% usage, they will give us a fourth channel, so we have that built in as a backup. They're doing complimentary drops to every single public building, and including, they're adding to that three digital boxes per site, and that's all school system, public buildings, I'm assuming Hennepin Tech, airport, any public building. There's a performance bond, a security fund that's all in here, okay, and everything else is pretty much the same as our 1997. We've had, really, the best counsel in Brian Grogan that I think we could have had. He is well-known across the nation. He's a speaker anytime NATOA, which is a national organization for telecommunications, something. Anytime NATOA meets, Brian is typically a speaker that others go to for advice, and he has franchise agreements that are going on, and he's tracking across the United States of America, so we really feel fortunate to have someone of his caliber there at the helm. So, I'm going to turn it over to Brian Grogan.
Could I ask you a question, council member Case, before you go on? You said something about they'll be closing the studio, but they'll be tripling the money available to public access. Will you explain that a little more?
Yep. So, right now, our current franchise agreement takes 25 cents per subscriber home and across the five cities, and we send that to Comcast, and Comcast runs their studio. They hire a person, they have the equipment, which they, it's questionable how they've maintained it through the years. It's ancient equipment, quite frankly, it's analog, and it's quite old. We are being given all of it, if we want to continue with it, whatever it's worth, but that 25 cents is growing to 60 cents. So, now, the 60 cents will, it will be completely up to the democratic process within this commission, so our job this next year will be to decide, where do we go from here with three, nearly three times the, well, it's growing to 65, so I guess I'm a little loose with my three times, but going from 25 up to 65, the second five-year is part of the franchise. And, you know, again, we, as a five-city group, we could build a new studio. We could have our own. We could go in with Minnetonka. We could go over to Bloomington and rent space, so they have a studio. I mean, it's just a lot of alternatives, but we have a lot more money to work with. We could, we could have a room here with a state-of-the-art computer that mixes and have five cameras that get leased out for free to our residents. I just think the potential for improved programming and better access is great, much greater under this franchise than what we've had in the past. Only anywhere from 13 to 17 different individuals have used the studio that's set there. We hope to multiply that many times over with this additional funding.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Grogan?
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. For the record, again, my name is Brian Grogan. I'm an attorney with the Minneapolis Law Firm of Moss and Barnett. I'm sorry I'm not up in front of you today, but I'm trying to try to work this PowerPoint, and even though I practice in the cable communications field, I don't practice in the IT field, so if I mess this up, I'm sure we have experts in the back room to help me. You know, as usual, I've represented the commission for probably a dozen years now, and council member Case has been chair, I think, for almost that entire time period, and as usual, he makes my job a lot easier, because half my presentation has been covered in better detail, frankly, than what I could have done. And the reason it's important to have somebody like council member Case on the commission is we have continuity. He's brought with us a consistency that you don't always get when you have a lot of turnover on a commission like this. It's tough with the job that you have to serve on these extra commissions, and I don't think, I can recall him missing a single meeting. He's really put a lot into this. He's traveled in years past, now, he hasn't been able to recently, but he's traveled in years past to these telecommunications conferences to learn more about this, and that's really helped with a 30,000-foot policy guidance that has really been beneficial to the commission. But with that background, let me just augment a few of the comments that were made, and I know you have a big agenda tonight, so I'm going to keep this to three key points. I'm going to go over just very briefly the history of, from a regulatory standpoint, how we got here, the key provisions of the new franchise, which will duplicate a few of the comments, but I want to be clear about this transition period that council member Case referenced, and then the recommendations of the Cable Commission. So, the history of the process. A little more than 15 years ago, this city council in the city adopted two documents. It was a regulatory ordinance and an existing franchise. It was a two-document approach back then. There were a few reasons why. Back at that time, we expected we'd have three or four cable operators serving every city in the Twin Cities area. They'd be competing for subscribers. We all know it didn't turn out that way. We largely have one cable operator serving the community. We hope that there's competition coming down the road, but the need to have a regulatory ordinance to govern all the cable operators, and then a separate franchise to have the unique provisions with that operator, is rendered obsolete when you only have a single company in town doing business. So, that model has kind of fallen out of vogue nationwide. What we see is a single document. It's simpler for your administrative process, for your staff as well. Instead of looking at two documents, trying to figure out which one governs, staff can now look at a single document, understand the restrictions and the regulations on Comcast, then address the subscriber complaint or the council concern. So, franchise expires at the end of this month. Now, whether or not we get all the approvals done, we have an agreement with Comcast that they'll continue to operate under the existing franchise until such time as we get this contract completed. Comcast actually requested renewal three years ago, and the first question might be, well, why did it take us three years to get this done? Comcast has to request renewal three years in advance, because federal law requires them to do that. And what we did shortly after receiving that request is we went out and we hired an outside consultant, a third-party specialist that really focused on community programming. So, the PEG acronym that you see referenced in your reports, Public Educational Governmental Programming. We wanted someone to come in, give us a neutral view of, is our studio working? Is the model that we're using to serve these five cities functional or not? That report shed a lot of light on the issue, and it's going to lead to some of the decisions that I'm going to describe in a moment. But we completed that in the late 2010, early 2011. We started negotiations with Comcast. We had some stops and starts, but in the end, we reached agreement in the spring of 2012, and in May of 2012, the commission voted unanimously among the five cities that are represented by that commission to recommend approval of the franchise agreement that's before you this evening, and also repealing the underlying regulatory ordinance, because it's rendered obsolete, assuming the franchise is acceptable. I'm going to jump right into the key provisions of the franchise. Council member Case, I think, did a wonderful job explaining the objectives, and I think when you, after hearing those objectives, you'll understand why some of these provisions were then agreed to. We agreed to a 10-year term, not a 15-year term. Part of it, I think, is logical for anyone who follows video communications these days. There's an awful lot of change going on. My college daughters watch everything over IP-delivered services. They don't subscribe to cable TV. There's a lot of regulatory changes going on. What we wanted to balance here was some regulatory stability for Comcast, with some flexibility that we wouldn't be locked in too long on this. The concept of a five-year term was thought about. That would mean that because they have to ask for renewal three years ahead of time, you'd be seeing me way too often, and cities don't want that, especially with an outside legal counsel. You have an adequate attorney sitting here in front of you every evening. You certainly don't need another one. So, we decided with a 10-year term. We wanted to merge the regulations of the regulatory ordinance into the new franchise agreement. Again, I think council member Case did a good job of describing why. It is, it does create some regulatory simplicity as we go forward. The issue near and dear to every city's heart is compensation. How are we compensated for the company's use of the right-of-way? It's important to emphasize here, for those who might be watching this meeting, Comcast is the only private entity that uses all of the city's streets, public rights-of-way easements, but is not regulated by the Public Utilities Commission for a rate of return. So, when we buy electricity, or gas, or other things, those that have regulated rates, there's a rate of return that each of those companies secures. Comcast isn't held to that standard, they're held to a market standard. So, what Congress has done is said cities are entitled to a rental fee for the use of the right-of-way, just as if you were to rent Parkland to a private company, there's a fair market value for that. 5% is the fee they've agreed upon. Most cities in the metro area charge that. That's identical to what you've charged the last 15 years, no increase in that fee whatsoever. I do want to emphasize, it's only on cable TV. It's not on video, or, excuse me, it's not on broadband, it's not on telephone. So, most of you probably, if you're a subscriber to Comcast, you might buy all three. This is only a fee on the provision of cable service. That's because federal law restricts us in that way. We couldn't go further than that. We did try to augment the definition of gross revenues on which this fee is calculated, so that it would be as robust as possible, basically so that you can collect as much as you're entitled to under federal law, and that's, again, consistent with the past franchise document. Again, as was described earlier, we have three PEG channels. We used to have four. As we sit here today, we have the right to four PEG channels. Our consultant concluded that we're really grossly underutilizing the four channels, and it was important to Comcast to get some of that capacity back. It's not our first preference, of course, to give back a channel, but the fact that we weren't currently utilizing them made the give a little easier, and we gave it in return for some other conditions, one of which is Comcast's commitment to provide a high-definition channel for the city's use, whether for public educational or governmental. I've been before two other city councils, and I've heard gasps when I've mentioned that, the thought that you would be on your home TV in high-definition, and some have argued that we'll get a good makeup artist for all of us, especially those like me who need a highly-trained makeup artist, but you'll have the option for high-definition, and more and more, we all notice that programming is going that direction. We don't, over a 10-year period, want to be left in a proverbial black-and-white setting when everybody else is in color. So, that was an important give, and Comcast worked with us on that issue, because they knew it was important. Probably the biggest issue that you're going to hear about tonight is this transition period. Once this franchise becomes effective, the studio located here in Eden Prairie is going to close, again, if this franchise is acceptable to you. It's going to close for a couple of reasons, and I want to emphasize three of them as you consider this topic tonight. Number one, Comcast made it clear at the beginning of this process, they had no interest in providing and continuing to provide a public access studio for the five cities. They frankly admitted they're not very good at running public access studios. This is the only one they run in the state of Minnesota. It's one of a handful left in the entire nation that Comcast runs as Comcast Entity-controlled Public Access Studio. What they wanted to do was support it, but basically have the cities run it. Their view is, cities know what's best for their community. If they decide to emphasize public access TV, that's for the city to decide. Then their focus turned to, what should the funding level be for their support? And that's consistent with virtually every other community in the Twin Cities. So, that was number one. Comcast had no desire to continue to operate it. Number two is, the law changed since 1997. We can no longer mandate that Comcast provide that studio and pay for the employees that run it. If we had, they would have been entitled, under federal law, to offset the costs of those employees against our franchise fees. So, Mr. Case was close on the franchise fee revenue. It's a little over $700,000, which, I think he said 650, so we're really close on that. But the question would be, do you want to withdraw 20,000 of it without any say to go to an employee that you don't manage, that you don't control, to run a public access studio that by, at least in independent analysis, is not run efficiently and is not well utilized? That did not sit well with the Cable Commission, and that's what led to this recommendation this evening. So, what we've done is we've agreed to a 12-month transition. Comcast will continue to provide playback for educational and public access users. What that means is, if you're a public access producer and you create a program, you can continue, three months from now, to do just what you do today, which is submit it to Comcast at that facility, they will program it on the channel, and that will continue for 12 months. Over this 12-month period, Comcast is going to pay us $200,000. This is the only fee that's going to the commission. As I'm going to describe in a minute, everything else is going to go to the city councils now, which is a different, a change in this whole practice, but 200,000 will go upfront to the commission. We intend to use that to purchase automated playback equipment and to probably hire another consultant to make sure that we do this in an automated way, in a correct way. That will be take over that playback obligation. So, at the end of the 12-month period, there will be no lapse in terms of the programming for the P-E or G. That will continue forward. Now, here's what changes. As was mentioned earlier, instead of the 25 cents going to support this studio, it will now be 60 cents that will come, not to the commission, but to each city. Each city council will now be in a position to decide, what's the best way for us to handle P-E-G? And I frankly, based on my conversations with managers and with elected officials, I suspect there's going to be a little bit of a difference between the five cities. I don't know how big, but I suspect some will emphasize G over E, or P over E, and, you know, those choices will be made based on who is sitting in the chairs that you have tonight. For this transition period, we're going to pay Comcast 13 cents, because they are going to maintain this facility and an employee, but just for that 12-month period. There's a step up for inflation in the second half of the franchise to move this up to 65 cents. This is going to represent for Eden Prairie in the neighborhood of between $110,000 and $120,000 a year dedicated strictly to P-E-G. Now, one thing to keep in mind is, this is earmarked for P-E-G. Under federal law, we cannot move this into the general revenue fund. We would have negotiated that if we could, but federal law prohibits us from doing that. Your franchise fees continue to be unrestricted. You can use those any government purpose you want, but this has to be used for P-E-G. So, that's one thing to keep in mind, and I've talked to your city manager about that, and he's well aware of that condition and comfortable with it. Comcast is going to maintain all the existing fiber lines that come from this city hall, school district, other locations. Those will be maintained throughout the 10 years. They're going to continue to provide free, basic, and expanded service to all the schools and public buildings. Mr. Case discussed strong customer service obligations, and frankly, that was a focus of the elected officials in particular that were on the commission. We need to make sure we can respond to consumer complaints when they come in in a more effective way. We put in probably four pages of customer service obligations focused on objective standards that you can enforce. Tough to enforce subjective standards, you know, we can't enforce that they do it with a smile on their face, but we can enforce timing. 30 seconds to answer the phone, 30 seconds to transfer it, timing for installation, you know, quarterly compliance records. All of those things are in this document, and we backed it up with strong enforcement provisions. $100,000 performance bond, $10,000 security fund. If you draw the 10,000 in security, they have 30 days to replenish it back to its full level. It's almost a never-ending security fund, the way it's been drafted. Finally, these final few key provisions. We have right-of-way management. It's very simple in the franchise. We've referred now to your city code. Your city attorney has done an excellent job of putting in strong right-of-way regulations that govern all right-of-way users. There's no reason for us to try to duplicate those in this document. What we've done is say, Comcast, if you want to enter our streets, you'll play by the same exact rules that Exile Energy, CenturyLink, anyone else that enters the streets has to play by. Permitting, bonding, all the restoration requirements following construction. So, in that way, simpler for your staff to implement, because it's the same standard across the board. We have what's called a side letter. That sounds a little nefarious when you hear that phrase, "side letter." It's actually just two provisions that we decided not to put into the franchise, because they didn't seem to fit correctly. One is flexibility for the use of this $200,000. We do plan to hire a consultant. Technically, that's an operating cost, not a capital cost. Comcast understands that that's necessary to do the job right. Comcast understands that that's necessary to do the job right. They were very willing to work with us on that, and we appreciate that flexibility. Also, we wanted clarification that the PEG fee, the 60-cent fee, when you collect it from an apartment building or condominium, which Eden Prairie has certainly a number of apartment buildings, there's bulk contracts that Comcast has. We wanted clarification on how that was going to be collected and remitted to the city. That letter does that. Finally, then, with respect to the recommendations, they're very straightforward. The commission unanimously approved a resolution recommending approval of this 10-year franchise to Comcast, also assuming that is acceptable to you, then repealing the underlying regulatory ordinance because it be rendered moot by virtue of the new franchise agreement. Thank you, Mayor, and I'll certainly stand for any questions. If you'd like, I can be upfront if that's easier for you.
Yeah, why don't you for questions? That'd be great. Councilmember Nelson?
I've got two questions, but one I'm confused about. When does the studio close? Does it close instantly, August 1st, or does it close 12 months from now?
It will close 12 months from the date that I receive all five cities' approval of this document.
Okay, so the actual cable, it's not just the programming going over. The actual cable studio will be there for 12 more months. So anybody who is making a program for September can plan their program and still go in there, correct?
No, I'm sorry. If I misspoke, I apologize. Councilmember, the franchise calls for the studio itself to close once all five cities approve this document. What will be maintained for the 12 months is the playback capability. So for example, right now, about 1,000 programs a year are submitted to the studio for playback on the public-access channel. Of those, over 900 are produced outside that studio. In fact, our most recent statistics show that only 200 programs overall were actually produced at that studio by about 13 different producers. So that studio will, in fact, go lights-out as soon as, or assuming that the five communities approve it. And if they don't approve it, then, of course, we'll go back to the drawing table and we'll take the input that the councils give us.
I'm somewhat concerned that, as a city, we have no time whatsoever to put another studio of some kind together, or even look at what's necessary and make these plans, and yet there are groups that are making these programs regularly, in some cases have been for years, including immigrants groups that were in here earlier tonight. How we facilitate them if it goes lights-out right away? I had sort of understood that they had a whole 12 months where we looked into it, had some time to get something put in, but if this, in fact, stops before September 1st, let's say, how do we facilitate those people without any time to look into it and make decisions?
Well, statistically, the studio itself only gets used about less than five hours per week. That's the total amount of usage. And from simply a cost-benefit standpoint, because the commission analyzed those numbers, the determination was made that it's simply too expensive to maintain a facility that stands there for that long at that expense without a greater amount of usage. It doesn't directly answer your question, is what do we do in the interim? I think there are alternatives. I think there's neighboring jurisdictions that have studio facilities available that may be available to those constituent groups. But it did come down to an importance on Comcast. Comcast's position was, they want it out of that, and they want it out of it at the expiration of their franchise. We pushed them through extension resolutions to continue to operate it. I think the one thing that, if I can anticipate, why don't we have that transition plan done tonight to present to you?
It would be better, yes.
I understand. I think the concern of the commission was, we didn't want to be presumptuous to assume that you would approve this funding mechanism and therefore implement a transition plan without first coming to you and coming to all of the member cities and saying, "Here is the proposal for funding. Is this acceptable, or is it not?" So it was a little bit of a chicken and an egg, or a carton of horse analogy, where you have to do one before you can do the other.
It seems like we should have some provision for these groups that at least goes out more than 30 days, that we've made some arrangements to rent another facility for a couple of months so the cities have some way, or your commission has some way to make some decisions. And that concerns me. It concerns me greatly, in fact, that there is no time to look into what we want to do without just cutting this off, and to the point where I almost want to have something in hand where we know we're going to rent from another city for a month or two, or something that will transition at least over a two- or three-month period of time. Also, you said that they're talking about hiring a consultant as part of this $200,000 that might go into either a new studio space or whatever's decided. Personally, I think we do have to have some kind of a studio. Certainly wouldn't cost $200,000. What kinds of money are you talking about paying said consultant? Are we talking about paying them $10,000? Are we talking about paying them $90,000?
Frankly, my suspicion is that the, my hope would be that the consultant that we hire is likely going to be similar to the vendor that we hire, and that a lot of the consulting work will be provided because we're going to be making some major equipment purchases. I want to clarify, the $200,000 is not intended by the commission to support a studio at this time. What the money was intended for is to make up for the loss of the playback facility at the end of the 12-month period. Right now, if you're a school district member, for example, and you produce educational programming, you have to physically, once a week, get in your car with your tapes or your media, drive it over to the public-access studio, hand it off to the Comcast employee during normal business hours, and then they go ahead and implement the playback. They're going to do that for 12 months, but what we want to do is bring that system into modern times where there is no bicycling of tapes back and forth, where we can, through a fiber connection or an IP connection, allow the educational institutions to automatically download that into a master server, which will then be able to be programmed to play that back on the educational channel, similar with public access.
So we're potentially giving up studio altogether, or any kind of equipment, or anything, by doing this without really getting a whole, well, I guess we're getting a few more cents a month? But I was going under the assumption that some of this money was going to be available to make public-access television available to the public. Granted, a lot of people do a one-camera, "I'm making a recipe at my home, and here's how you make Lefso," or whatever. But that doesn't account for groups that want to use a multiple-camera setup, which they've had in the past. And I had anticipated that some of this money would go towards the possibility of putting together some kind of a studio space. We're not talking about a major television station or anything else like that. We're talking about something that reasonable size that would facilitate a couple of cameras and whatever else side equipment would go to it. And so if none of this money is, in fact, going to that, I'm concerned.
Let me try to comment, and I know one of your fellow council members has a comment. What we've tried to negotiate here is a pool of revenue. It's far from me to say what each city council will decide to do with that money, or what the Cable Commission will decide to do. I can tell you that, from listening to the Cable Commission members, several of the cities at this point have no interest, or apparently no interest, in moving forward with a public-access studio. Some have expressed an interest in it. And what we've tried to accomplish, in an effort to address all five member cities' interests, is to negotiate a rather healthy pool of money that will now be available to each city council so that you can determine, if you choose to dedicate that for public access, that may fit this community and to others. It may not fit one of the other five communities, but each city would have the autonomy to make the decision that's best for them. Commission certainly stands ready to give guidance and recommendations and provide that expertise, but we wouldn't step into your shoes and presume to make the decision for you. So your voice, along with your fellow council members, will decide that issue.
That's that 60 cents for, about how much is that for Eden Prairie?
$112,000 a year for the first five, $121,000 a year for the second five, which we will have the control. If we want a studio, we'll have a studio with that. If we want to pay to have someone sit there and run it, if it can fit in that amount, we'll do that. We'll have that control.
But that's after a year. The money has to come in. It's not something that--
Eden Prairie High School has a studio, Manitaka High School has a studio, Bloomington Community Center has a studio, so there are alternatives that the commission can really effectuate as quickly as we can to get some alternatives, to cover that one year.
Okay. Councilmember Aho?
My understanding is that the equipment that is currently being used in the facility is also going to be turned over to the Cable Commission. So if it were up to the Cable Commission, and they wanted to put it in a room somewhere and set it up somewhat like it's already being operated, they could choose to do that at a very minimal cost, just really the cost to have the room and to have someone set it up. Is that correct?
That's exactly right. In fact, Councilmember, there's been discussion, many of the vendors sell what they call a "studio in a box," which are two suitcases. You come, you check them out, and it has everything you need to put together a simple-talking-head show, if you will. I'm not suggesting that's an alternative for a studio, but there are remote options. The commission hasn't determined whether that's, who would do that, but those would be available.
Right. So I think the point is, is that there's a lot of alternatives, given the existing facilities that are out there with some of the other communities, and with the equipment, and with the studio in a box. I think if there's really a truly a need perceived to move ahead with some temporary interim facilities, we can accommodate people if they want to produce it that way. So I really don't see, from my perspective, I don't see an issue with not moving forward with this recommendation.
I have a couple of questions, Mr. Gogan. The first is, you talked about how this is a rare studio, because most places that Comcast is, they don't even have them anymore. What have other communities done that you know of? And I guess my concern is, if we built a studio in here that the public could come in and use, perceptually, is it like government overseeing what the content of that program is? Are there, I don't understand what I'm getting at. Is there a sense of censorship or something if you don't have some neutral location that the studio's located at?
Absolutely. Let me try to address those two separate questions. First was the question of, what are other communities doing if Comcast is, this is the only one they're running in Minnesota? Let's look to the north for a moment. There's a commission called the Northwest Suburbs Commission, which consists of Maple Grove, Golden Valley, Brooklyn Center, Brooklyn Park, and I think a dozen other communities up there. What they have done historically over the last 20 years is they've taken all of the franchise fees from all those communities, and they've put it to the commission. And then they've taken, excuse me, they've taken a 93-cent PEG fee, and they've pushed that to the commission, and they formed a very large bucket of revenue. They run a studio that is probably equivalent to KMSP Channel 9. They produce nightly news shows relevant to their community. They have on-air talent, hired staff that reads the news. Completely different approach. The difference there, of course, is the $700,000 that goes into your general revenue fund now, in that case, they dedicate it to public access. They do wonderful things with it, but it's just a different policy approach to how those two commissions have done it. In the Southwest, it's generally been more hands-off. The cities did not historically want to get too involved with that aspect of programming, and so that's one of the differences. To your second question of, if a government entity takes over public access, does that somehow squelch creativity or create a content control? You know, in the early days of PEG access, people used to worry about that because they were worried you'd get the very controversial programmer who would want to put on the racy programming simply to get a rise out of people and to create the controversy. That's really been taken over by alternative IP sources now. We can find all the racy program we want on YouTube if that's what we're interested in. So you don't really see that. What you see with public access today is people talking about community events, democratic processes, various political causes, et cetera. Maybe the group that was in here earlier this evening has a different program they would like to put on. So I don't think the content is the concern. Some cities don't like to take on new obligations in a time where we all have budget constraints. I'm having very much trouble with this. Where we all have budget constraints, and so those legitimate concerns come up. But having the city simply provide the conduit for the program--
That's not a problem.
No one prescreens it. The only time you would ever potentially pull a program would be if there was community outcry, and then, of course, you turn to Mr. Rossell, your attorney, and say, "Is this a problem? Is this a controversial program?" It rarely ever happens in the country these days. I can't think of the last case, might have been 15 years ago.
Okay. And then the other question that I had, and I realize you don't represent Comcast, you represent--
I represent the commission and indirectly your city. Yes, I'm your attorney.
So when the consultants came in, why did they not survey any of the users of the studio to find out why they thought it wasn't being used, how usage could increase, what the problems were, what their desires were? I mean, you made a statement in this that, because of the cost of conducting a needs assessment, but earlier on in your email, it indicated there were only 15 people that were studio users in 2009. That doesn't seem like it costs much to send a survey out to 15 people.
True. Let me describe, so that everyone understands the context of the question. The issue is, we created this needs assessment that I described earlier. It was in 2009. Recalling also, the financial condition of the world in 2009 was on edge, let's say. The economy was in a dire situation. Cities were very much concerned about it. The commission was very much concerned about the loss of franchise fees, people disconnecting from cable, et cetera. With that backdrop, we still had a job to do. We hired the consultant. I helped write the scope of services for the consultant. As the information started to come in, and we saw the limited number of users, I believe there was 13 users in 2009, 13 access producers. Now, that's not just in the city of Eden Prairie. That's out of 57,500 subscribers in five cities, a population base of over 200,000 people. That was the number that the consultant came back with. That was Comcast statistics, but there was no reason to doubt those. The question was, well, should we go a step further? Should we do subscriber surveys? Should we do focus groups with the producers themselves? As we got the budget numbers for those, it didn't seem to make sense, from a cost-bud, a cost-benefit standpoint, to move forward with more expense when the commission had already, looking at the data, generally formed an opinion, and that coupled with the two earlier explanations I gave, which was that Comcast didn't want to run the studio, and the laws had changed. That led to the decision to limit the scope of it and try to do this on a little more cost-effective way.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? If not, this is not a public hearing, but we are giving people an opportunity to speak. Mr. Straight, I know you wanted to speak.
Mayor, councilmembers, staff, my name is Jeff Straight. I live at 15021 Summer Hill Drive in Eden Prairie. Last night, I did speak in front of the Manitaka City Council, and I told the mayor that he would be the third mayor. I would request my neighborhood to be annexed by. Of course, that was just a bit of levity to lighten a very serious discussion. I'm not going to leave. Anyway, I want to thank the commission, the Cable Commission, and Mr. Gogan, and Ron Case for all their work. It is a difficult thing to get your hands on. However, and I'm glad our city council members brought up a lot of points and questions that I still have. I would like to talk a little bit about a number of things here. I still remain concerned that, for apparent financial lack of finances, this commission did not contact just a few producers, or even invite one or two of them to one of their meetings. They didn't have to be Eden Prairie or suburban producers. They could have been someone who knows what access television is. In all this discussion, I've heard no one talk about why access television is a benefit to the community. Some of it, of course, is wild and crazy, but a lot of it, like Republican Roundtable, Democratic Visions, Beladon, some of the shows done in this little studio, they're top-rate, they're professional, they've been done in a very small studio. We've always had a good time. As far as we can see, that studio has been run very, very well by the management there. It's always been professional, and all of the people, volunteers I've brought there, have always had a really great time. I suspect that's the case with the other shows of our ilk. So I don't want you to have the impression with the statements that it's been managed poorly, that it has. It's a small studio, it's an out-of-base studio, but it's been run very, very well, and the people I've brought in there as a producer of one of those shows have really had a great time. In listening to the comments by the city council in Manitaka last night, they kind of agreed, "Why should we keep something like this going?" Well, I think the whole thing has been neglected, even since it was Paragon, and then Time Warner, and now, you know, no one knows about it. I was thinking that the mayor-- I was thinking that the mayor of Minnetoka, if he had wanted to do a "mayor talks about being a mayor" show, he could have used that facility too. His staff, his communication staff and his people never came up with that kind, it's just right down the road. And Minnetoka residents, Eden Prairie residents, Richfield residents are using it. You could have gone there too, but it's, you've never used it, it's been ignored. To my knowledge, Minnetoka and the other cities are like Eden Prairie. Not once on Channel 16 or our educational channels run by our school district, has that channel or that studio been advertised, even in the silent little slide messages. Whoops. So it's kind of an ignored orphan that no one knows about, okay? Sure, it's underutilized, and it's hard to get time there because there's only one employee and one editing system and all that. And I'm not making an argument to continue that studio or that facility, I'm not. I just want you to know that there have been a number of groups there that have made it work and made it work very, very well. I also want to make a case for continuing to work hard to get a replacement studio. That might not happen right away. But mention has been made that it's the new media age, that everyone can get the word out through Twitter and Facebook and all that sort of stuff. Nothing can replace the gravitas of a formal, well-let studio for the kind of people on our show and that the Republicans have and that Ahmed Sarwat has. We are all access shows, we're all done by volunteers, we're not paid. Some of these shows are among the best in Minnesota. Ahmed's program, Bel-A-dan, has been picked up by the Minnesota Channel. It's seen all over the state. It was done in that crummy little studio over there. And so things can be done in a small place, but we, I think the commission should have been far more advanced in talking about what's going to replace it in the future. I mean, you know, I agree with Councilmember Nelson that we need something. Now, if we lose that studio in August, I'm going some other place. I don't need to wait for the city or the commission to take action for that. We're going to continue in one way or another and make our own little deal. It may cost a little money, but we want to do that. We don't want to, but, you know, you have to do it to keep alive. So I'm very, very concerned that there will be not a unified interest in developing a studio for more than one or two suburbs. I recommend that all of them form a studio because it has to be upgraded, it should be bigger. We're not only talking about talk shows, we're talking about local dance groups, we're talking about local bands and music groups, all this sort of stuff. It's a whole bunch of people that can be ignored. So I think the commission was remiss on that from the get-go. I think over the last 14 years, the P in P-E-G stands for "public," and the concern has been for education and government. In the end, as this washes out, I am not at all satisfied that a city, government, or a school district will oversee a public access facility. It may happen in the short term, but if that has to happen in our area, the bylaws or the controlling laws ought to make sure it's totally independent of control. That's the spirit of this stuff since the 1980s. Let's see. And it is expensive to rent space. I called Channel 2 up, my former employee. It costs $6,000 to rent a studio there bare bones for the four hours that we get over at this little access studio. That's $6,000. That's no artwork, no nothing, no editing, that's just two cameramen and three cameras in a bare studio. MCN is Channel 6, that's a nonprofit organization up in northeast Minneapolis. Now, we could go there, that's going to cost us $1,200 for three or four hours. And we have to change, you know, it's not easy. So we have to, each shows will have to go to another access center if they want to continue. We're going to try that. But I think our five communities really need to get together. We need some salesmanship to convince them that we need this facility. We are premier suburbs, not only in Minnesota but in the nation, okay? And some of us have been doing very well with this little studio. And we need something for the creative output of our citizens that will, you know, make that cost-effectiveness very, very shining. Let's see. So, you know, it needs to be done, but I think, I'm recommending that you don't approve this until we know what's going on. And I know you may have to, there are money factors and all this sort of stuff, but we have to have in place, I think. I mean, our group will go on and do a show wherever we have to, but for the others, and that's what I'm talking about as well. For the Somalis who were in here earlier, a plan has to be in place before you approve this. And that's what I'm asking cities in the five districts, five areas that we have. If there are any more questions, I'll be around here. Mayor Tyre卢Kens, if you have a minute or two, Ahmed Sarwat would like to speak.
Sure.
He's one of the users and has the best show up from that studio.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Straight.
Thank you. My name is Ahmed Sarwat. I live in 15421 Lake Street Extension, Minnetoka, your neighbor here. I've been doing Bel-A-dan, which in Arabic word for was open arms, and we've been opening our arm for a lot of guests, a lot of people that do not have voice. I started this show more than 15 years ago. I walked in downtown Hopkins, when the small studio right there, and I saw a cable studio, and I didn't like how mainstream media was covering and representing Arab-American, Muslim-American, and this was even before 9/11. And I walked to that studio and I said, "I need to check out if I can have a show, a television show that can, we can represent ourselves." And I was surprised coming up from Egypt and Middle East, that was for me, you know, a transformation experience as an immigrant living in this country and see the service and openness this country given to immigrants. So 17 years ago, started that show in Arabic and was targeting Arab community at a time which there wasn't that many. So we thought, maybe we should really talk to, you know, the mainstream media, mainstream audience and turn to English, and we start producing the show in English. And, you know, of course, we have a limited niche audience, this is the idea of access cable, that you have a niche, it's alternative media, that we can say anything you want, we can represent ourselves. This is probably one of the few public places where Arab-American, Muslim-American can say what's on their mind without it being marched or being questioned and put in under scrutiny. So 17 years later, that all of the sudden, we hear about closing down the studio. Never heard of any attempt as a producer, as an audience, talking about five hours a week. That number that was given by, that presented here is really misleading. Five hours a week? I can hardly get an hour or another time. It's packed, it's, whatever facility and capacity that studio have, it's been overused. So if you want more programming and if you want more hours, we can do it if you have more facility and more, you know, resources there for other producers. Talk about 13 producers, this 13 producers at a given time, but if I didn't hear the number that, the number of producers that have used that studio in the last 10 years or five years must have been by hundreds, but people come and go, people come and go to start off things. My program was only on Channel 16. Now my program on public television, online, Bridge TV, which is a national media source, and even aired in the Middle East. So we have a voice, people all over Minnesota, they know there's something, a southwest cable television. And to produce half an hour show, you have to have four hours. So even if we go with that number, five-hour programming, multiply that by average four, five hours, that's a lot of hours coming out of a small studio. And the fact that a public place is not used doesn't mean we shut it down. If we're going to shut down public places that's underused, we're going to shut a lot of places, you know, like public transportation, it's underused but still there. The fact it's there and it's available for people. And especially now, with the, you know, Minnesota now is different than 15 years ago. Lots of immigrants come in from Somali and Muslim and all colored immigrants coming that people know nothing about it. And the mainstream media are not going to give us a chance to tell our story and bring Muslim-American, Arab-American, Somali-American to mainstream audience. So yes, it's underused, but that's not a good excuse to do a cost-benefit analysis for a public service. You cannot put a price on a public service. I really appreciate the time you've given this. It's wonderful to hear this kind of point you brought. This is probably the only chance that we have an input in all of this. We hire highly-paid consultants to do a study and something very cheap that you ask the people who are actually involved, producer, cheap. I'm a market researcher myself, I could have done it free, voluntarily, you do a research about the feasibility of that study. So thank you so much and I appreciate your time.
Thank you. Is anybody else that wishes to speak? Okay, Mr. Case.
I just want to express appreciation to all the people that have, through the months and years, the last decade or so, worked really hard to produce public programming because I think we all deeply, everyone on the commission in fact, too, deeply, deeply values the public access component to PEG, you know, public educational government programming. And just to remind everybody that, putting the studio aside for a moment, we still had 800 other programs that got produced outside of the studio. So 80% of our programming was produced outside of the studio. It's not like public access programming just stops if the studio stops. 20% has concerns and problems that we need to help address and help people get into the Eden Prairie High School studio, get into the Minnetoka High School, just during the months while the commission and this council, because this council is the decision-making body on how to spend the new money, which is not small and will not be in our hands. If we don't vote on the franchise, we lose $40,000 every month that we delay this. That's not helping get, the studio will be gone because Comcast has said it's not going to be part of their responsibility anymore. If we force it somehow, they would have rights to take money away from our franchise fee, the 5%, which then is, you have, we all would have to go back to taxpayers at that point and say, "Is this what we want to raise your taxes 1% to cover the cost of 13 people using this studio?" I think that's a hard sell. But the idea of having more and more public access to programming is exactly what we want. And this franchise enables that, in fact enhances that. I mean, 60 to 65 cents, 100, we will now have a second five-year, but we'll have $112,000, not immediately the first year because 13 cents goes to Comcast to continue the playback, but we'll have $112,000 to do a lot with. I mean, I too think, at the very least, we need a room that has some lighting, that has a computer now with all the technology today that mixes and has two cameras. I agree with the two-camera concept and the lighting. I think we need some kind of a space, ideally somewhere in the five-city area that people can use. And/or we contract with Bloomington to have our time. But we've got to figure this out, but we have now the funds and the capability to do I don't see any, I know some of you are questioning, it feels unsettled, even though, I mean, from my perspective, we've worked on this for two to three years and we have ironed this out. I get the questions, but what I'd like to ask you tonight is, can you really come up with any advantage in delaying this? I know your frustrations, the frustrations are out there and they're going to remain if you delay it. In fact, they exacerbate your concerns if you delay it because we start to lose $40,000 a month and we don't get any closer to your studio. So if we want to get, you know, if you're concerned about a studio, we've got to get going. We've got to get this franchise signed by all five cities, we've got to get moving, we've got to get the money being collected. And I really appreciate Mr. Straight's concerns that we also, and Kathy, you voiced this, we, I think we as five of us, but also the commission, needs to address, which you'd think we maybe would have, maybe we assumed that groups would go out with the 20% and go out and maybe to Bloomington, but we really probably should help facilitate that process and at least connect people for now. And let people know, we're not forgetting that, we're not, that, this is, I saw this in the last couple of years as an potential explosion of public access, not a diminishing. I guess it's feeling tonight, maybe some of you are thinking like it's a closing in. I see it the opposite, I see it exploding out with the technology today. I mean, I have two college boys and I have acquaintances of theirs that I know of that are producing amazing things on their apples in their basements, you know, with two cameras. I mean, and not to say that's the quality in anything, anywhere close to what Jeff Straight, and I participated in Jeff's programming and he does an incredible job. But we can get it better with better equipment and we'll have the money and the resources to do that now. And it starts by passing this ordinance.
All right. Is there a motion?
I would like to move it.
Okay.
I would move to approve the first reading of an ordinance granting a cable television franchise and approve first reading of an ordinance repealing the cable television regulatory ordinance.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, so the action passes, but I think it's very clear that the council is very concerned about making sure that there is access to some kind of studio.
Very much.
And I think that we'd really appreciate seeing some kind of plan laid out sooner rather than later about how we can expedite that for people that want to use studio space.
Does that come back from our own personal staff? Because again, this is really, as much as Mr. Straight would like the commission, we're not getting, and I don't know if it's just a sales marketing job that the chair should have been doing, but we're not, we're not getting that from a couple of other cities there. They really want out of this. In fact, there are a couple of our five sister cities that had zero participants in this studio. They're not interested. So if we are, which I believe we are, there are alternatives. Minnetoka, I'm not sure, Hopkins, I'm not sure, working with Bloomington, maybe we slide out of our group, not to, not out of the franchise, and we go work with Bloomington. I don't know. But it seems like this is going to take long. You know, I appreciate you want this done before a second reading. I don't, I think that delays. I think what we should do, this is my personal opinion, I think we should pass second readings tonight and direct staff to come back with options, alternatives, and plans so we can get moving.
That's the direction I was headed.
Sounds good to me.
I really think we should try to either get some time in Bloomington for a few months period or work with the school district to get some time so that these programs can continue, you know? And it should be doable, but it needs to have a little bit of a priority to figure this out for at least those people that do have a regular show, a show that's been going for 15 years. Now, I realize he lives in Minnetoka, not Eden Prairie, I don't know how that...
Minnetoka has.
Minnetoka has.
Has a council and they'll have money and they'll...
Okay. So I guess, you know, that's not our media problem, but it does seem like, you know, the more we can facilitate this change over the next couple of months, the better. It would be, given a reasonable amount of money, you know, being spent, I'm not going to say, "Go rent Channel 2," that's, that would not be reasonable.
Okay. Mr. Getchow.
Yeah, maybe wrapping this up, Mayor and council, so then, as Councilmember Case said, I know of as well, one or two cities that have zero studio use or close to that and have no interest in the studio. So then it would be a collaboration with those cities that remain and maybe others and city staff can move forward on evaluating that because the next commission meeting, I believe, is a ways away. And that group does need to work on other issues related to the transition, a lot of the stuff related to the E and the G and the playback as well. So, yeah, we can start that discussion and get some, maybe some up-to-date, accurate numbers on producers in and around Eden Prairie as well, if we can get that information.
And they pull some of them in.
Up to date.
On the discussions.
Right. And then back to the last comment, you just did act on the first reading, so you could consider the second reading as well.
Right now.
Which you mentioned, yeah, right.
All right.
I would like then to move to approve second reading of an ordinance granting a cable television franchise and adopt resolution approving summary ordinance and approve second reading of an ordinance repealing the cable television regulatory ordinance.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. So for those of you that are watching, the only reason we can do a first and second reading in the same night is when the first reading passes unanimously, correct?
Can we request...
Both.
Oh, yeah, both.
Can we request some kind of information back at the August meeting from administration about how this is going and what we've been able to...
Sure. I can work with you on that, too.
Can we request some kind of information back at the August meeting from administration about how this is going and what we've been able to
Sure. I can
All right.
Work with you on that too.
Okay, that brings us to the first of our public hearings. I want to get things moving here, which is regarding amending a TIF district. Mr. Getchell.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Actually, we were going to have an HRA meeting tonight and a public hearing related to the TIF district number 12, but there needs to be some more work, discussion, and negotiation with the developers, so we ask that you continue the public hearing tonight.
Okay, is there a motion?
So, move.
Second.
Pardon me, that should be continued to the August 21st. That's what we said.
So, move that one.
Is there a second for that? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Resolution vacating drainage and utility easements, Mr. Getchell.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This is related to the Eden Prairie Woods development, Hennepin Village site, and the property owners here have requested a vacation of the drainage and utility easements that were originally a part of a plat with Spring Heights. So, this would be a release of, of those easements and then there would be new drainage and utility easements recorded and that this action tonight would be conditioned upon the recording of a plat of Eden Prairie Woods following a council public hearing and adoption of the resolution.
Okay, any questions for Mr. Getchell? Okay, this is a public hearing, is there anyone from the audience that wants to address the council on this vacation?
I move to close the public hearing. Close the public hearing and adopt the resolution vacating all the drainage and utility easements lying over, under, and across Lot 3, Block 1, Spring Heights, according to the recorded plat thereof, Hennepin County, Minnesota.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Mitchell Crossing Apartments, 2012.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. We have a request by Eden Prairie Development for a guide plan change, a comp plan, guide plan change from community commercial to high-density residential on just over three acres, along with a planned unit development concept review, district review with waivers, and a zoning district change from community commercial to RM 2.5, that's a higher-density residential. And notice that this public hearing is published on the July 5th, 2012 Eden Prairie News and sent to nine property owners. Our plan commission as well has considered this proposal. A couple additional comments tonight. You'll see, and we're going to have some presentations and, and discussions in a public hearing, but you'll see that the recommended action of staff is to continue the public hearing to a, the next subsequent council meeting due to some staff issues related to the parking and the waivers and, and the setbacks. However, previously, there was some discussion on if you were to approve the development that there were several conditions that staff had, so you'll see that in the development report. But just recently, the city attorney has kind of strengthened that recommendation for continuing the public hearing due to some changes in the plans that have developed between plan commission and council and earlier, so he could comment on that. But then, following that, we do have the project proponent here as well to provide a presentation prior to the public hearing.
Okay.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, the recommendation to continue the public hearing to August 21st is based on the requirements of your city code. City code requires that an application for a PUD, which is what this is, may not be acted upon by the council until it has received the recommendation of the planning commission or until 60 days have elapsed from the date of referral to the planning commission. And what the planning commission considered at its June 7th meeting was a project of 185 units, 83 feet in height. And subsequent, and, and they made that recommendation to the council with no planning commission conditions attached to that, that would have suggested required changes in the, in the plans. And what, subsequent to that meeting, the developers submitted to the planning staff a revised plan for 192 units at a lower height, which is what went into the council packet. I received the council packet actually rather late on Friday evening, Lorraine was working pretty late that night, got it after the ballgame actually, and reviewed it Monday and called Mr. Franzin and said, I think we need to talk about this because I'm concerned about the process that is being followed and that the process follow the city code and that it is consistent with the due process requirements, notification to residents. I'd like to see the notices that were published, to see what was mailed and what was published in, in the paper to understand whether we have a problem here or not. And so, we had that conversation, actually, Mr. Franzin, Ms. Jeremiah and I spent quite a bit of time this morning on the phone reviewing this. And what was in fact published was what was, for the planning commission, was the material that was submitted to the planning commission at the 185 units. What was published for the city council was the other plan. It's simply not in accordance with your city code to consider at this point a plan that the planning commission hasn't given you a recommendation on. And so, that drives the recommendation that, one, you continue the public hearing after conducting the hearing tonight, that you not close the public hearing, you keep the public hearing open, but you refer the matter back to the planning commission to hear about the 192-unit plan, so that the planning commission has its statutory and ordinance function to fulfill, to provide you with comment on that plan, and that it then come, and that could be at the August 13th meeting, if that's the next meeting of the planning commission. And then, there would be, there is time then to bring this back to the city council at the August 21st meeting for you to conduct the continuation of this hearing, take into account any new comments that might be made by the developer or citizens, and receive the planning commission recommendations and act on the proposal.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Case.
I'm, I'm a little bit concerned upfront that it's city staff that did the publishing, correct? I mean, we, we knew what came out of planning, we somehow published something else for council. I'm just concerned about our culpability in that piece of it, I'm confused. But the second thing I want to know is that, I know that, that this pushes, and anytime development comes in with the winter season coming up, it pushes everything off. So, would there be any opportunity, if we did go back through this process, just to know upfront here, that we could do like the second reading that night or that, is that a possibility to speed the process where we could approve first and second reading? Of course, you probably can't because sometimes we send, well, we've done that, I think. Usually, we send that back though for, if there's any conditions or corrections.
Councilmember Case, my only immediate, the comment to the last piece is, and a project this, you know, large and, and, in its scope, usually requires quite a bit of time to negotiate a development agreement. But in some cases, you know, in some of the projects, some of that, you know, does begin, you know, tonight would be the, the public hearing, some of that, you know, can begin following tonight's meeting. But still, that would be something that would take some discussion.
Okay. Okay, Mr. Carlston.
Thank you, Mayor, thank you, staff. My name is Scott Carlston. I live at 8150 Druxel Court here in Eden Prairie. I've been a resident for Eden Prairie here for 20-some years. Could I get the
Just, I'm just going to be started. What's up?
Just touching base in the past, first of all, I, I'd say if it doesn't, we've been working on this project for a long time and if I wasn't say the wind aren't out of my sails, learning this at 4:30 today is kind of disheartening and I hope we can work together as a team, which I've always prided myself in working with the city staff, council, and I'd like to continue doing so as well. So, as I go through the presentation, I, I guess I would just like your feedback as we move forward, but if I sound a little down, I guess it's because I, I was not aware of it either and I know that we did submit June 26th, our application with 192 units, the building size did not change. And to find out today at 4:30 that it can't be recognized tonight, it was a little disappointing. So, that being said, anything we can do to work together, we would sure appreciate it. Time is not a big deal, but a huge deal when you start talking to $35 million project coming to the fall in Minnesota. I brought our whole group here tonight and I will like to introduce them as we move forward. And since it's so intimidating and scary for me, can I sit over there?
Yeah.
As we move through this presentation. Can everybody hear me okay?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. This is just obviously getting back to the developments we've done in the past here in Eden Prairie. I was very excited, obviously, to come in and get in front of us again. I was very excited to share the new project with everybody because I think we've spent a lot of time and effort in putting a great, great team together. I can introduce you as we go through here. The first person there is Rick Fenske. Rick Fenske, he's kind of a mixed-talented guy. He used to work for Maxfield Research and now works with Weiss Builders. And he's kind of the analyst guy, which worked out very well with Weiss Builders and they're very particular in where were they going to work and where they're going to build and what they're going to build. Next to him is a, is a quiet guy who, you may recognize the person that, when those gravestones were stolen and there was a quiet donor, that was Peter Taunton here in the green shirt. Peter is a business partner and is an investor in the project here. So, that was his nice gesture that we saw on TV, so that's just who Peter is. Barb Helverson, she's top-notch, she is the leasing president of Stephen Scott Management, which manages 7,500 properties locally, they own 5,000 properties locally. They currently just were one of the most successful buildings put up called the Ellipse, which is the France and Excelsior Boulevard where the Mill Valley Kitchen is. That is a site they're doing, they're hired to be our project manager and they will be a, assisting us as we move forward here. And I've also, Todd MoHagen, who's our architect, with us, Cheryl Gordon, who will go through a couple of slide presentations, she's the one that kind of brings life to the buildings. She did the, a couple of the big buildings down in Uptown recently that brought life to, gave them names and naming rights, so the Flux and Blue, that was Cheryl's doing. She's with Carbon Creative, she owns the company. We brought her on, on, on board to name the building. It most likely will not stay Mitchell Crossing. She was concerned that might sound like a retail shopping center and so she's going to be working on that. And that's, there is Mark Anderson, MFRA, our civil engineer, and then my project coordinator, business manager, Kurt Manley, with you, next to, next to him. Here's the project, here's what we want to do. We think it's going to be, it would be, a great asset for Eden Prairie. I know driving home every day, I'd be very proud to look up at it next to Buca. I dream of it every night I drive home and that, that is the truth. I think Eden Prairie is ready. We have not had a new, a new apartment building here since 2004. There is a reason for that and I'll let Rick Fenske do more in detail when we talk about that. There are reasons for that. The new norm in the apartment building industry is studios and one-bedrooms. Very different and that's what's going on today. And that's really what we need to spend a lot of time in. I know staff had questions about that and parking was an issue that we had addressed because it is very different than the norm and, but the norm is, the new norm is different, it's changed. To launch this $35 million project, a lot of things have to go right. We feel that we're right on track for that. We think it's going to be a great positive impact on the community. It'll create jobs, it's going to be good for the residents, especially now that I saw United Health has done a big promotion and some big expansion. I think it's a real necessity here. Here, here's the location of it, you can see it's going right between BP and the Buca. I did meet with Carrie Beam, Carrie, the owner of the gas station there, she's very excited because it's been very, very quiet for a long, long time. She's very, she's thrilled to have a lot of new business coming next door to her and we look forward to obviously putting it in there. I wanted to show you this slide, just to show you that, that we, that we do own three different parcels here, it's not just the one there. We do own the street area, across the street, and then back towards the wetlands. In the wetlands, in fact, what we want to do, this slide again gets back to the BP owner here, Carrie Beemint, we want to also include some, as I'll get into the slides, some of the dog-walking trails and that type of thing. Here's really what we need from the city. We are not asking for any money from the city, we're not asking for any financial help from the city, we're asking for three PUDs from the city. And the PUDs are the important items that we need to make this development work for the, for the business perform of the building. The building's got to perform. If it doesn't perform, we can't get financing. If we can't get financing, we can't have investors and we can't make it work. I appreciate the staff sitting through their first workshop with me because that was something that really needed to be aired out in the very beginning, which obviously gave us encouragement to move forward and I thank you for that. Project's going to take us 12 to 15 months to build, right, Rick? Rick says 14, 15 months. We need to get the unit mix. The unit mix needs to fit and that's really what's different today because so many young kids are trying to get out and their studios are a big deal today. And I'll let Barb speak on to that and what's going on. Buca, I think will obviously benefit from some good business next door. Here is one of the, the PUDs that we're asking for, and this gets back to the setbacks, we need to increase the unit totals because there are smaller units today. You know, the days of the three bedrooms and two baths, now it's a 600 square foot futon flat-screen TV. And we've seen a lot of it. In fact, a article in the front page of the newspaper today, I saw the big influx going into Minneapolis and I'll let Rick and Barb talk about why that is happening. So, I think we need studios, less than it won't work. Mitchell Cross, you know, the, the project, I think, really does, it fills the need, it's in the right location, we're close to the LRT, we're close to Southwest Station, it's going to be right across the freeway. And Councilmember Witstrom there, I would love your opinion at some point to talk about where you think the real final stop will be, shall the LRT go through? Were you not involved with that?
Probably me.
Nancy?
Probably me.
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, the question was where is the final stop?
Yes.
You know, these are still kind of in flux.
That's what I've heard. I've heard it's still a moving target, but this is roughly around the Eden area?
Yeah.
Safe to say? So, we're not too far off here. So, this gets back to, it's a unique location, there's nothing special, it's, it's kind of the orphaned lot that a lot of things have tried to go on. I don't think we're going to have any neighbors that we're going to affect or upset. I had not one person come to a public neighborhood meeting on my mailings. I did get one phone call from a property manager behind me that said, we're very excited, excited to have you, named Dan Dreyer, who I just happen to know from high school, so that was kind of, he just said, we're excited to have you coming in there. There'd be a lot of mass-oriented development in the area there. Obviously, we'll be close to the Southwest Station. This is the map that I pulled out from the site. Obviously, this would be our dream. And right now, what I'd like to do, turn it over to Rick Fenske. Again, Rick wears a few different hats, he works for Maxfield Research and I'd like to have him chat. But just real quickly, what, the, the one thing that Rick is going to talk about is going to be a study that, after I presented to the planning commission, staff asked other staff and themselves, and they went out and compiled some data and some information. This slide here is me asking about that information. there that said that all the underground parking is 100% full. So that would be like Water Tower Plaza. So what I did is, I went to Water Tower Plaza Monday morning, July 16th, just yesterday morning, and I went out into the garage and I took pictures. And I'm very confused, because this is what I saw. And so when they say to me that it's 100% full, I don't quite understand that. And that's, and then, this was last night, and I saw that they said that Eden Place was 100% surface parked, and I went there last night, and there was, this was the back lot at Eden Place. This was the back lot at Eden Place. And this was Summit Place, 5:50 in the morning. So you can see, there's plenty of surface parking, in my opinion, going on site, and I didn't want to have any hearsay, I just had photos from the time slots to take us both out of it, because I, like staff, we've worked well together, and I don't want to do finger-pointing. But it's very evident to me that the two cars per is become a real issue, and a real, it really is tipping the scale around direction. Even Buca, which is very interesting, you know, when Buca first opened, we couldn't even get a table in there, but now that parking lot is deader than dead, but they still must do good takeout business. But the parking lot is never full, and I can very comfortably say, I've never seen it full, and I drive by it again two, three times a day. I'll turn it over now to Rick Fenske, and he is with the construction company Weiss, who also built Summit Place, and they built the most recent building, the Bluffs. What Rick is handing out there is a letter that actually, the ordinance here was just changed in Golden Valley, and this is an email and the actual new ordinance that Golden Valley has adopted after interviewing some of the neighboring communities.
Councilmembers, Mayor, Weiss Builders builds a lot of apartment buildings around town. Our company has built over 30,000 units, and one of my roles is during the pre-construction is to not only provide pricing consulting for developers, but also, my background working at Maxfield Research is the feasibility consulting, helping the developers create a project that's going to be viable and unmarkable in the community. One of the things that we are noticing is, there's about 13,000 apartment units being proposed in the Twin Cities metro area. Less than 2,000 of those are in the suburbs. There's many reasons for that, but the primary reasons are, you don't get the rents that you do in the urban core areas. You're lucky in the suburban communities to be able to get $1.50 a square foot for rent, and that's really kind of the break-even point to even be able to build an apartment. In the urban core, you're getting $2.00, $2.25, and sometimes even higher than that. And that's why you're seeing the huge amounts of apartments being proposed in the urban core, but very few of them in the suburban communities, and hence, that's why Eden Prairie has not seen a development since 2004. Other factors that are driving this trend are the municipal issues, density. In order to make these apartments work today, you have to have economies of scale to get the justification for the construction costs, and the parking ratios. Typical suburban densities or parking ratios in the past have been two spaces per unit. We are seeing, as Scott pointed out before, and Barb will touch on as well, that these ordinances of two parking stalls per unit are not being fully utilized. In fact, what we're seeing developers use today is a ratio of one parking stall per bedroom, and we'll show you some statistics in a little bit that kind of illustrate that. Parking can be very expensive, it's $15,000 per stall. So when Scott first approached us with this project, and we had worked with several of the other developers that had this site in the past, and for whatever reason, mostly economic reasons, they've not been able to make this project a viable project. And so it's been handed down from one developer to the next, and the last three developers, it's increased in density as we get closer and closer to making this project a viable project. It wasn't until to Scott and Kirk came to us and said, "Well, what can we do to make this site work? This community needs it, we need to make a viable project." So consulting-wise, we took a look at the, tried to maximize the density, knowing that there was a market here in Eden Prairie, but also worked on the cost to construct the building. And one of the things that we looked at was, it was way overparked. If you look at the slide here, the city ratio of two stalls per unit would mean that the construction cost, just in the parking alone, would be almost $5.8 million. Typical developers are seeing that their needs are one stall per bedroom, which reduces that parking cost down to $3.9 million. And in fact, we actually have a ratio somewhere in between there, we're at 308 stalls, so we're at 1.23 stalls per bedroom, which is higher than the one that most developers are asking for. Another way of looking at it is, two parking stalls typically take up 750 square feet of space in a building. They're typically 375 square feet, that accounts for the circulation in any ramp parking. But a studio unit, which this building will have a lot of, only takes up 600 square feet. So by the city requiring two parking stalls per unit, we're actually building more space in the parking garages than the living units themselves, which just does not work in the economics of building apartments today. We handed out the suburb, Golden Valley just changed their ordinance, and they're trying to become more accommodating to developers. They want to see some more density in their community, they want to see more of an urban feel to their community. So communities such as Golden Valley and many other ones that we're working with today are revisiting their ordinances. Golden Valley did their own study and came up with a 1.5 ratio per unit.
That's not, can I ask you, that's not in any of this information?
The attachment isn't there.
Yeah.
Oh, it isn't?
All it is, is we're going to look at our parking ordinances. There's no result of what Golden Valley passed.
It's on that slide, it's in your pamphlet.
Okay.
It should be...
Should be on the page with the yellow highlighting.
Okay, got it.
Yeah, because the first page of Rick was starting here.
And then the packet also includes emails from the city that talk about how they justified the reduction in the ordinance, parking ordinance there.
Mayor Lookins, if I may, well, not only did they change the parking for apartments, but they changed it for lodges, they changed it for some commercial uses in there as well.
Okay, thank you.
What we're finding today is, in today's economy, we have a new renter demographic, and I know Barb Helverson, who will speak next, will talk to that more, but there's changes in the demographics of the renters. Also, there's new preferences for renters today. Renters that we're seeing in the marketplace today are willing to bypass some square footage to get higher amenities, finishes in their units, and more common areas and more amenities in the building. And they are choosing to go into smaller units to have more upscale units and buildings with more higher amenities. And that's, and that is those renter preferences which are driving the unit mix today, which is then driving the parking ratios. So that's the emphasis for why cities are looking to reduce their parking requirements. If you want to look at the slide here, when we took a look at the study of parking that the city had conducted, we came, when we did analysis by per bedroom, the data showed that the existing apartments in Eden Prairie actually had, were parked at 1.21 stalls per bedroom. When we did our analysis of our project, we're at 1.23. So even though we're not at a two-to-one parking ratio per units, our parking ratio per bed is actually higher than what the existing facilities in the community are currently. To make the rents and these buildings viable in these suburban communities, we're building these on very thin margins. So every dollar that we can save on construction costs makes these projects viable. Like I mentioned before, we worked with two previous developers on this site, and neither one of them could get this project to cash flow properly, and thus, finally, we have somebody who can make, take this orphaned site, as Scott said, and make it into something great for the community.
You've talked about amenities and floor plans and square footage, but I don't see any of that.
That'll be coming up in the later in the presentation.
Okay, thank you.
One question I have on the, it says EP study currently 1.21 parking. What study are you referring to, and where's that data?
It was a study that the city staff provided to Scott and myself, and it had a listing of all the apartment buildings that they had called that claimed that they were 100% parked. Even with them being 100% parked, that's where their ratio is. When we added up all the parking stalls and divided by the number of units within those facilities, it ended up being 1.21. And they also had a breakout of the unit mix, I'm sorry. And we took the total parking stalls divided by the number of bedrooms for each of those projects, that's where we came up with that ratio.
Okay, thank you.
Is there any allowance for the fact that a three-bedroom unit is probably occupied by a couple and children versus a one-bedroom unit that would have more likely two adults?
Well, that would only help our cause in that case, because the parking, we would justify three parking stalls when only two were needed. We're also saying that, you know, a studio unit and a one-bedroom unit would typically only require one parking stall. We're also finding that, to help accommodate some of the needs for parking, a lot of the facilities in the buildings that are being built today will have our cars, where you can rent the cars for just chores for an hour or two, and that's something that if we run into any parking issues, that we would be willing to accommodate as well.
Oh, you'd have subcars, a station for those?
Was that...
You'd have those cars, you'd make arrangements to have a station for subcars?
Yeah, the cars that you just keep there, that you rent out by the hour, whether they're electric or gas, yet to be determined. But those are some of the things that urban core apartments are doing to help justify. City Minneapolis actually prefers your parking ratio to be less than one per unit, and so we're getting by with using our cars and some other alternatives such as that.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Nelson, did you...
Yeah, I have one more question about the parking, because, you know, if you've got a lot of younger people in these buildings, or, you know, some single office workers or whatever, often you do have two adults together, and you have a couple in a one-bedroom apartment, not just one person, they often have two cars, plus they have friends that occasionally come and visit. And part of parking is not just per resident, it's on the assumption that they have guests. And we've always been pretty particular about not having, you know, huge quantities of on-street parking, you know, this kind of neighborhood would not allow for a lot of on-street parking of guests, for instance. So, you know, I'm not sure that 1.21 number really is that accurate when you get into having, you know, not every apartment has a guest all the time, but you have to assume at least one in 10 has a friend over. And the younger the population is, probably more people they're likely to have over.
Right, and if you notice that, you know, that would be reflected in the parking ratios of the existing facilities, and based on the photos and the research we've done, the existing facilities' parking lots are not overcapacity, they're not even close to being at capacity.
Yes, but I'm a little concerned with you throwing up Summit Place as an example of being, have too much parking. I mean, my parents live there, I go over there during the day, and the parking lot is full. So if it might be not full at 5:50 in the morning...
If I may, Mayor, that was actually not even part of that. I just took pictures of some of the sites that were noted in that. As we get back into the presentation, I'll show you the sites that I did comparisons on. There was three or four sites, I just took pictures because they were all part of the sheet that I just received two days ago from staff, areas that they said were 100% parked, and that's why. It's that one, it's Columbine, it's Eden Place. I didn't get involved with getting too deep with them, because really, I was looking at the three comparable properties being the Bluffs, Southwest Station, and Water Tower, is what I think are real comparisons for us. Now I'm going to have Barb Helverson, who's the president of Stephen Scott Management, talk specifically to what Councilmember Nelson was asking about.
Good evening, Mayor, councilpeople and staff. I'm Barb Helverson, I am the president of Stephen Scott Management, and Hunter Emerson has chosen us to do the leasing and management for Mitchell Crossing. We've developed in Eden Prairie, we developed Parkway Apartments, Eden Vale, Eden Glen, and the hills of Eden Prairie, and we still manage those, the three last properties in the community, so we're familiar with Eden Prairie. I have 35 years' experience with the company, and that experience includes working with developers on new properties. And our role with developers not only is to do the management and leasing, but also identifying target market groups who will live in the building, recommending unit mixes, apartment sizes, suggesting amenities and features for the building, and we believe there isn't a demand for this new property in Eden Prairie. We're currently working on six other new developments throughout the metropolitan area, helping developers, some of them are in the cities, so this is really exciting to have something in a suburban area. There's a great groundswell of interest in renting as a lifestyle choice, you've probably been reading about that in publications and the newspapers, and you've read about the growing demand for apartments in particular. The future demand for apartments is going to be remaining high. The two largest group of renters that we'll be seeing are the two largest demographic groups. One would be the millennials, which are the kids under age 30, there's 82 million of those, and those of us who are baby boomers and are coming back into the rental market, totaling 80 million. So the future and need and demand for apartments is really still going to continue to be high. There's economic factors that play into it, but there's still, I mean, the millennials have to get a job, so they move out of mom and dad's house. But right now, the market in the metropolitan area is at capacity. Occupancy is at about 97%, and that's considered way over norm. 95 is kind of a balancing point. So when you have even a new employer like United Health coming here with demands for housing and rental housing, things are really at a capacity. So the growing demand for quality rental housing also has created the need for a different type of apartment, and Rick has discussed that a little bit. Today's renter opts for smaller living space, convenient locations, and user-friendly common areas. The new properties being developed, such as in the North Loop and Uptown, Long University Avenue in St. Paul, in a number of suburban areas, are all smaller units, and properties have a different unit mix than what we saw in the last boom of apartments. The buildings that we built out here 20 years ago were typically more heavily weighted with larger units, two bedrooms, possibly three bedrooms. The units that we, the property that's being proposed now is 70% small units, studios, one bedrooms, one dens, and that is the trend with the demographic demand that we have. But the demand for small units also comes with buildings that are less densely populated. We just recently developed the Ellipse on Excelsior that was referred to earlier. It's a 132-unit building right on France and Excelsior Boulevard. And that unit makes us 65% small units, studios, one bedrooms, one dens, 37%, large units. And of the 132 units, 95 of those apartments have one occupant. So when you're asking the question about, are there really a fewer number of people, there really are truly fewer numbers of people. The one bedrooms these days that are 600, 700 feet don't accommodate a couple or two people as the old ones. Eden Vale's probably 750 square feet, and it's much more conducive to two people living in a one-bedroom. So the reality is, there really are less people that live in these buildings, and definitely a different mix of apartments, so that the need for parking is a lot reduced on a per-unit I did a little analysis, and I typed it up, and I realized spreadsheets are always difficult to look at when you've seen them for the first time. But one of the things we do with developers is we actually take a look at what we think the real true parking demand is going to be. You can talk about the number of stalls you need per apartment, or you can talk about the number of stalls you need per bedroom, and those numbers kind of get confusing. And what I did on this plan with my marketing director is, we actually took a unit, a look at the exact unit mix of what Mitchell Crossing will have, and we actually determined, based on experience we have in other buildings, to what we believe the demand would be. And we think you could use 273 parking stalls in this building. All the studios will have one unit, one car, there'll only be one person living in them. Most of the one bedrooms, I just kind of did some math here, in any way, it comes up to about 273, you can study that math. And this is even a little bit more aggressive on parking than our Ellipses. Ellipse doesn't have this large of a parking ratio. Comes out to 1.6 stalls per apartment, and about 1.9 per unit. So your ordinance is 1.8 to 1.2, this would be about 1.6 per unit, and still would allow excess parking for guests. So we really believe that, based on our experience with parking and other properties, including our Eden Prairie properties. You can see up above, I listed some information on our Eden Prairie properties, Eden Vale and Eden Glen. We just don't have the parking that we used to. We just, the people don't have the cars they used to, they're smaller families renting. But this isn't really a perfect science, I understand that. And I also want to say that parking management on a property is as important as pet management, lease renewal management, maintenance management. You can't just allow people to constantly bring any kind of vehicles on a site they want. So we would set up a management plan for this property, just as we do for other ones, so that people know how many cars they can have, they have to register their cars, they can't have recreational vehicles, they can't have long-term overnight parking without permission. And there have been times on a property in St. Louis Park where we've refused to rent to somebody if they've had too many cars that they wanted to bring on the site. So I am going to say that professional management manages parking, just like they do other parts of the business that we have to take care of. So I don't know if you have any questions, but... So I don't know if you have any questions, but I can answer anything else you'd like or you can go home and study my little spreadsheet and see if my math is correct.
Okay. Thank you, Barbara. Any questions? Thank you.
Next, if I could introduce Cheryl Gordon, who's going to just help in discuss some marketing and branding that she's done with the buildings themselves.
Good evening. I'm Cheryl Gordon, I'm from Carving Creative. And we've worked with a lot of different types of businesses and have done quite a bit of work in apartment buildings and multi-housing. We're currently working on a new development that's just going to break ground in Uptown and one that's in works in the Warehouse District. What we bring to the project, and I'm going to take the focus away from parking for a moment, I guess, because what we bring to the project is more the benefits for Eden Prairie, which is bringing residents to the building and bringing them quickly and leasing the building up so that it's a profitable building right from the start. We helped to develop the name of the building. And in doing that, we really look at the community that the building is being built in, the businesses in the area, the design of the building, and the target market, and find a name that really appeals and helps people to understand what the building's about and helps to create an environment where the right people come to the building. So when a building is saying that they're going to do a lot of studio apartments and for a lot of singles, we make sure those singles find the building and know that it's there. We create a buzz about it, we work with the neighbors, we do a lot of work with organizations in the area to make sure that they're aware of the building. We make sure that people see the benefits of moving to Eden Prairie and living in the area. We worked with Blue Apartments, we named the building in Uptown. And when we did the marketing for that building, we created a scavenger hunt. And what we did is we took people through all the businesses in Uptown. And they had to go into Lunds and find the person at the cheese counter and learn about a type of cheese. They had to go onto the Greenway and plant a plant on the Greenway. They had to go to the food shelf in Uptown and find somebody to give them food to bring to the local food shelf. They had to go to some different bars and restaurants, the movie theater. So that when somebody finished the scavenger hunt, not only did they have a chance to win a year's free rent at Blue, which somebody did, but they also, the other people that came and competed in the scavenger hunt, learned about the community of Uptown and learned about the different businesses and became people who wanted to rent there then, even if they didn't win the year's free rent. And we do that with all of the buildings that we work on where we make sure that the community is known and that the businesses are incorporated into the community. We never, when we do an event, we make sure that the businesses all have an opportunity to be a part of that. So we would help to showcase Eden Prairie and why people should want to live there. We also ensure a quick lease-up. We just finished working on Flux Apartments in Uptown. We named that building, also did all the marketing for that building. They had their first occupancy certificate in January, their second occupancy certificate in March, and was fully leased up by May. So we've had a lot of success with the buildings that we've worked in in making sure that people know about them, come to them. The Flux website, since it started, has had 26,000 different visitors go to their website. So being able to lease 200 apartments is pretty easy when you can create that kind of buzz and that kind of social media.
Any questions? Thank you.
Thanks.
The next few slides I just want to run through real quick, and this is what we talked about a minute, is councilmember Nelson. This is what we envisioned for the community rooms, the separate kitchen areas, workout facilities. Peter Taunton, who left, is the owner of Snap Fitness, so Peter will be involved with the design and layout of the health club in the building. Might not be at Snap Fitness since he's got a, one of his franchisees fairly close, but Peter will definitely be involved in the design of it. We're going to have a lot of Wi-Fi areas. And a big thing we want to do is an amenity deck. The amenity deck will be in the middle corridor area where you have plug-in Wi-Fi stations. There will be some outdoor barbecue. This is kind of the concept idea, but this is one that Weiss is building right now for Gray Star, which is a 600-unit building down on the Greenway in Uptown. But kind of the inner area, I guess, is what we're driving at. We plan on having outdoor barbecue on the cement deck, similar to here over Southwest Station where they've got some perglos and outdoor fire pit. And possibly the outdoor movies, although I heard that they are in trouble at the Bluffs for showing movies by Hollywood. Somebody got in touch with them and didn't like them showing movies over there, was my understanding. But I think it'd be kind of cool to drive down Highway 5 and see a black and white movie up on the side of the building. This I get into, the bike rentals, this is something we'd like to do to continue through, obviously, and do some possible rentals of the bikes attached here to the pathway which Eden Prairie's so proud and does a great job with all the connectivity there. This I actually talked about connecting to and do some dog walk trails out in the back because we own an acre of, in the back of the property that's wooded and goes back to the wetlands I discussed with Ms. Stovering. And she said as long as we stay out of the wetlands, she loves the idea, but just don't be in the wetlands. So she's very supportive of it, putting some dog walk trails back there. A neighbor of mine just opened up at Adago Hotel up on Crosstown, so I'd like to try to do some cross-business with him if need be. Possibly even a dog washing station. And then possibly an area, obviously down underneath, a car wash down underneath. This gets back to the hour car, which Rick has done before, that you can be doing. Rick Fenske had mentioned with Weiss that they're seeing these in town, some possible hour cars that can be rented. I actually stopped over at GE to see if I could try to work something out, and I know Mayor Nancy has driven a car over there.
That's great.
So getting back to this, again, this just really gets back to the big push with here is the parking ratios, which we really believe is one stall per bedroom is really what we're seeing today. And then this gets back to the parking study that was supplied to us just a couple days ago. And so what I did, and originally where this had come from was when I figured out that this apartment was not going to get built because I knew that we as a city had to do two stalls per unit, and that's when I really looked deeply into this. And I've heard that where that's the ordinance, and so I was a nerd on June 4th, at 10:30 at night, I jumped in my car and went out and drove all the parking lots with my cameraman, took pictures. And that's what I presented to the parking staff at planning. And I know then our council, our group went out and did their own study. And they tried to do peak times, and I was told to go at 10:30 at night and a Monday night on a non-holiday weekend. And this is my June 4th night, and this is what I saw in the back of Southwest Station. And I think these pictures might get familiar with folks who are pretty familiar with Eden Prairie because this is what I seen in those back parking lots. You can see it's very empty, and this is as you drive down Highway 5 and you look to the back of Southwest Station. And what I counted that night was 208 stalls, 89 of them were parked. So 43% were occupied, or I should say, yeah. This is the area that I'm referring to. This is the area in the back that you'll look and you'll drive every time you go down Highway 5, notice it if you could. And you'll see that that's always, not sometimes, but often wide open. I did it again on June 6th here at 7:00 AM. Again, I wanted to rotate times. Here's that same lift out in the back that overlooks Highway 5 and the back of Southwest Station on June 6th, the same one car out there. And this is June 10th, there's the same lift, and there's the same trailer there as well. The same lift on June 10th, again, the same van there on June 10th. And this again is from the highway on Sunday at 11:00 AM, so I'm trying to go at different times. And now this is a month later after they've restriped it, but the flatbed truck is still there. This is on July 7th, a month later. There it is again, it was just restriped, and there's your lift again that's still So that was Southwest Station. And then, of course, I got statistics, so I went out there this Monday morning. And again, this is what I saw Monday morning at 5:30 AM. And according to the charts, the day were parked 100% inside and a big majority outside. So the occupancy rate was about 28% of what I found here at Southwest Station Monday morning. And I went over to Water Tower Plaza, this is from the June 4th again, and I'll get through these very quickly. But these slides will show you the parking statistics that was given to me by the city reads that these are 100% full. And as you can look, this is June 4th. June 4th, I came up with an occupancy rate of 36% on my study. And this is July 16th at 5:40 AM under Water Tower Plaza. That was just this Monday morning. There's your numbers of the stalls. You can see the openness in there, and that on the report from the city was stated at 100% occupancy inside. So I had them at a 33% occupancy. But then I heard their statistics came from the managers, so I talked to Megan Seberg, who said that, and her exact comment was over at Water Towers, that everybody brought their home, brought their cars home, we'd be about 75% parked. That's from Megan Seberg, the resident manager. Here's the Bluffs. This is the night of June 4th again. They use the boats for parking out and back. I saw the X-trailer there was 54%. I did not get in the garage at the Bluffs because I didn't have the accessibility to get down to the garage. But this is what I saw then on Monday morning, this Monday morning where the same spot where the boat was, this is what I'm seeing. And they told me that they were almost 100% parked on the surface. So this one I found out is 56% parked is what I came up with, and I talked to the assistant manager, Brianna Samuels, who lives in the building, and she told me that parking has never been an issue over there. She said with the exception of a wedding at one day. So this one is, so my conclusion came from my on-street, onsite parking is about 42% occupancy. And again, I did this because if it was 2 to 1, I wasn't building the building period, and I needed to know for myself, and that's why I did what I did. This is the conclusion from the July 16th, my onsite observation, I had it at about This picture's here, Mayor Lukens, this gets back to, then on my way home, driving home, I just went by these other units that were mentioned, and I didn't get in deep depth with them, but I was just curious how their surface parking was, and that's why I took pictures at Shadow Green, at Summit Place, and at Park Place and those, Edenvale. And I know that Stevens Scott manages Edenvale, and this is pretty consistent with what they show. Columbine had a few spots, and this gets back to the Golden Valley handout. And with that, I guess I'd just like to turn it over to Mark Anderson with MFRA just to touch a little bit more on the market study that he has looked into.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Council. I'll just take a couple minutes. We've heard a lot of statistics about parking ratios, economics, and the utilization of those parking stalls on various sites. In the latest staff report, city staff provided a summary to us on their own research, which is great. More data is generally helpful in how we can understand the parking needs throughout Eden Prairie. Scott then asked me to take a look at this and comment on this, and so I did that today. And initially, it looked interesting, it looked like the ratio was a bit higher than what we had seen across the city, but it was also puzzling because there were still so many open surface parking lot spaces that were highlighted in the report itself. So I started doing a little number crunching, being the engineer that I am, just checking the data. And the first few line items seemed to check out, but then as I worked through the data, I didn't bring handout, but all these red marks are errors in the data. And you can do some simple math, and for some reason it was missed. So after I made all these corrections, rather than having an average ratio of 1.8 stalls per unit utilized throughout Eden Prairie, I actually came up with 1.7. So a small difference just in the math. But then I also took a look, a little closer look at the report that the city staff had provided, which outlined how they came up with these numbers. And I thought it was quite interesting that in their own report, in red, they note that the parking numbers are from their planning files. So apparently, they took some time to research the planning files and see how many parking stalls existed on this, on the various sites, and probably saved some time versus actually counting them in the field. And so those numbers were used then in their summary. However, what wasn't used was actual site data that was provided by the managers. And I think Barb mentioned this, you know, parking is such a closely managed part of what they do that I think the site managers do know how many stalls they have on site, and it's significantly less than what was part of the original plan and apparently was in the planning file. And so that, along with, there are other comments, and they range from 70% utilized in their underground to 80%. One site, in fact, Watertown Plaza, or Watertown Place, notes that they have 189 additional parking stalls in the underground areas that are only utilized at a rate of 19%. So none of that data appears to be accounted for in the summary that the city put together coming up with the 1.8, which I corrected to 1.7. So if you account for some of the site-specific data that's shown in their detailed report, you take a look at their utilization rates, 70 to 80%, rather than the 100% that Scott had indicated they've assumed, we have a much lower parking utilization rate than what's reported, and really is as low as 1.2 stalls per unit on some of the sites. In particular, 1.2 showed up on Water Tower where they had 19% utilization in the underground on 189 stalls. And I think I had one more, 1.2. Here it is, Shadow Green, where they only had 75% occupancy of some of their inside stalls, along with 90 open stalls in the surface parking. So some pretty large discrepancies here. And so the takeaway is, you know, we're showing a site plan with 1.6 stalls per unit, and we have the ability to go to 1.7 with some proof of parking opportunities, and we're well within, or even above, what's currently being utilized on sites within Eden Prairie. So I think that's important to note. The other thing I'll comment on, aside from parking, is one of the conditions of approval that we hope you consider tonight talks about Cochran Lane and the ability to modify the existing condition, which has been there about 10 years, where it's a one-way inbound into Cochran Lane adjacent to Buka. And so we've looked at some scenarios there, and we can certainly work with city staff on that condition of approval and provide a turnaround that would facilitate fire equipment, snow removal, and maybe even an occasional vehicle that needs to turn around as they enter the south end of the site near Buka. So that's certainly a workable condition for us. And then also, one of the other conditions of approval was to eliminate a few of the on-street parallel parking stalls, which, again, we can work with the city staff on that to achieve the goals that they'd like to achieve on both of those conditions. So with that, I'll turn it back to Scott.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mark. So with that, staff, I would like to say that I believe that we would mesh well with the community. I think what we have makes great sense. It's a big, big undertaking today to raise $35 million on a project. The lot has been sitting there, orphaned, and we'd love to put $35 million into the community, and we need your help and your support to do so. So I'd be happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Carsten. Mr. Getchel, did you-
Mayor, I was going to say, I don't want to get into dueling parking study scenario, but I was thinking maybe staff could provide a little insight into the study that we conducted, and maybe some other elements of the project as well. And we can, Mr. Ellis is going to turn it over to Ms. Jeremiah, and maybe Mr. Ellis can speak to issues related to Cochran Lane as well, I know he's weighed in on that. So before the public hearing, if you don't mind, to-
Okay, that would be great.
-let it expect more staff input?
Sure.
Thanks.
Your Honor and councilmembers, just want to make a few points and maybe talk a little bit about my understanding with regard to the discrepancies that have been brought up. And let's see, back at Planning Commission, we did believe that the request for the waivers was from- was from 2.0 to 1.8 spaces per unit. And our understanding is that the request before the council tonight is 1.65 spaces per unit. So regardless of what numbers were exactly accurate, the Planning Commission saw what they believed was 1.8, and you're seeing tonight what we believe is 1.65 per unit. And...
I'm Todd Mulholland, the architect. On the June 6th, the submittal was 1.62.
Again, regardless of what the submittal was, the Planning Commission's understanding was that they were at 1.8 at that point.
Real quick, I'm sorry, Janet, real quick, because I want to kind of be clear, because a lot of moving targets. Just maybe four quick milestones here. One is a discussion at council at a workshop, and that was about 138 units. There was a submission initially to Plan Commission about a month in advance, and that was the 188-unit plan with the 1.8. The Thursday before the packet went out on Friday, there was another submittal, and that's what Ms. Jeremiah is returning to, the 1.85165. So planning staff did try to turn around in basically one day, and then by that Tuesday Plan Commission meeting, to get that information in the packet, which had changed from what the staff had for a month. I apologize, Mr. Carlson, that when you came in with the 192, at that time, I wish we could have said that we wouldn't want to publish the 192, because we'll be in the position we're in tonight. But then I guess the council would have to look at the 185, which came in just before the meeting. But again, I apologize for the fact that you're hearing about that today, but we're trying to accommodate some changes and a lot of moving areas that we don't normally deal with. So I just, I wanted to mention that timeline.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Getchel, thank you for the clarification.
Thank you.
I did misspeak in that the report to the Planning Commission that was in their packet stated that the parking ratio was 1.8, but the actual plans that were presented that night, I believe, were at the 1.65 per unit. So that is a good clarification. We did not look at Southwest Station, and I know they spent a lot of time on the Southwest Station parking. Southwest Station is actually a condominium project, and some of the owners, we understand, are renting out their project, but it's not in our apartment listing because it's not overall an apartment project. So we really didn't look at the existing parking or the parking ratio, or talk to any management at Southwest Station. So I just want to point that out, that's not in our numbers at all. Also, with regard to the peak time, when we speak to apartment managers, and just based on our observations, Monday night is not a big night for guest parking. So that may be some of the differences that we're seeing, particularly in the surface parking. We're finding Monday night is not a peak time overall. One other difference that we may be seeing is that when we listen, when we talk to the apartment managers, I believe that what they're calling occupied is any space that's already reserved to a tenant, whether they're paying it through their regular rent, or whether they're paying an additional amount for that space. If it's reserved for a tenant, they're considering it occupied. And when they look on Monday night, that space may or not be occupied, but it's not available for anyone else to use. So that may be, again, some of the differences that we're seeing. So we tried to utilize both our visual review of the parking and talking to the apartment managers, because they know whether that space is really available or not. And we don't necessarily know whether that space is really available or not, even though it may be empty. So that may be, again, some of the differences that you're seeing. So parking is a big deal, and I think some of the discrepancies and differences may speak to the need for additional review, and the fact that the Planning Commission didn't see any of the parking reports from the, you know, property managers or from the staff review, and didn't get a full analysis, which is, you know, maybe one of the concerns. Also wanted to point out, aside from the whole parking issue, there are some issues with Cochrane Lane that our public works may want to speak to. We also looked at, per the council's discussion at workshop, this idea of whether there would be any market rate affordable, just by the size of the units, the, you know, more studios and smaller units, like he mentioned, whether that would address, you know, some of the affordability issue. And we're really not finding that. We're actually finding that the rents on this project are above any rents we've seen other than, I think, the one bedrooms at Water Tower are comparable. But this is even above the Water Tower prices for the two-bedroom. Water Tower does not have any studios, but the studios that we're seeing in Eden Prairie, the average rents are substantially below. We're finding $690 a month for studios on average, whereas this is $924. So it's a really big difference. And none of the rents meet the affordability requirements for unit sizes, and they get less affordable as you go up into the higher bedrooms of units. When you get up to the two-bedrooms, they're $500 a month off, and substantially, as I said, above our averages. So anyway, that's the, just affordability analysis, that was not factored into the Planning Commission, because they don't usually look at things like that, but we brought that, you know, just because it was discussed at the council workshop. And the setbacks are also something that staff wanted to discuss with regard to kind of the feeling of open space on this kind of density. When we get into these larger projects, we're not seeing that we've ever given the waivers for the front yard setback, because, you know, it can be kind of imposing from the street view. Again, that's something you can, you know, obviously look at, but I just did want to bring that to your attention. There's also, you know, less overall site available, obviously, per unit. It's a higher density than we've seen on any project, including the proposed Presbyterian Homes, which is obviously much, or I should say approved Presbyterian Homes, which is obviously much taller, but has a lot more open space, and therefore a much, quite a bit lower density. So I just wanted to point that out to you. As you know, I believe, I hope you know, staff has been trying to facilitate this in spite of the changes that the developer has been bringing forward. So our intent was to keep it moving. When they brought in new plans the Thursday before the Monday's Planning Commission, we still tried to show those to the Planning Commission, even though we didn't have a chance to do a report, just to try to, you know, keep it moving and let them have a look at it. When their plans were changed between Planning Commission and council, we tried to advertise the public hearing for the new plans, again, to keep it on track, certainly not realizing that it might, you know, potentially set it back, but to give you the opportunity to move it forward if you wanted to. So again, our intent was to really facilitate it. We don't usually deal with a lot of these changes midstream unless they're requested, you know, by staff or the Planning Commission. We know it costs money to change plans, and, but in this case, it was a little different, and we were trying to respond and facilitate and keep it on a timing. It can still stay on the same continued timing, even with a public hearing at the Planning Commission. We have time to advertise for August 13th and still get it back to you by August 21st. And I'll certainly take any other questions you may have. Mike Franzin, our city planner, is also here to help with any detailed questions on the parking studies or anything else, and correct me if I made any errors in my statements.
Councilmember Nelson.
Yeah, I've actually got a whole series of questions. Some may be for staff, some may be for the developer. You had said about the setback. Do you want to give me the details on the setbacks that are different, or even maybe throw up a plan of it and show us where the setback changes are, please?
I'll ask Mike Franzin to come up, too. Maybe we can tag team between the plans and the specific information. I'm trying to find that right here.
You can have a plan on the screen, it's a little bit easier to see.
Are you saying the setbacks changed between the Planning Commission?
No, I'm saying that the setback waivers have been the same since their first application.
But I want a little more detail on those setback waivers.
The setback waiver is from 35 feet to 17 and 1/2 feet on various locations. It's not a uniform, 17 and 1/2 foot setback all the way around, somewhere at 35 feet, somewhere less than 35 feet. So really have to take a closer look at the plan.
So it's because of the shape of the building and the...
Because of the shape of the building.
Mm-hmm.
Because of the shape of the lot and the shape of the building, the design they're trying to achieve, we're going to have some parts of the building, I'm going to say probably 15% of the building footprint is going to be within the setback area.
Only 15%?
Yes.
Kathy, could I ask a question, because it's related to that?
Yeah, go ahead, because my next one's on.
As you look ahead towards transit-oriented development that might come up along the light rail corridors, if and when that comes in, and I realize we can't make a decision on this project on that basis, but is this the kind of setbacks that you're thinking we might be seeing in those transit-oriented developments?
I think when you look at a transit-oriented development, you have to ask yourself the question, is this truly a transit-oriented design? Because a lot of the design features you see in the developments that are near the light rail station are not in this project within the site plan itself.
Okay.
The decorative street lighting, the wider sidewalks, the annual perennial plantings, the pedestrian scale.
Okay.
And the proximity to where the station area is, usually they're immediately adjacent to the stations that I've seen in some of the national examples, and some of the things I've seen out in Portland with their light rail system. So this is different.
Okay.
If this project was closer to the station, you might qualify it more, but you're probably a little bit farther than the 10-minute walk shed that you typically look for in a transit-oriented development.
Thank you. Thank you for letting me get in there, Kathy.
Okay. Next question is, are any of these units, do any of them have handicap, are they handicapped accessible?
Everyone.
Everyone is, so everything is at least three-foot wide doors, and you've got...
Universal design.
Some design in the kitchen for wheelchair.
Sure, I'll stand next to you. They're all required to be accessible. It's the Minnesota State Code, so...
Well, that goes in, but I mean inside the apartments, so these are all set up for wheelchairs?
They are set up to be accessible, and they are the percentages that will need to be, that will have the accessible sinks, accessible appliances. All the appliances will be accessible, but you wouldn't have like a wheelchair access underneath the sink. But the units, there's requirements by the state building code that require a certain amount of units that facilitate that. But as far as accessibility, the requirement by the state building code requires all the units to be accessible, and that, there's a technical term for that, but the doorways have to have like 32 inches clear, so anywhere that you would access, except for closets, you'd have to have access for that. So the state building...
Usually 36 inches is considered an accessible door.
It's the clear that what they do. The 36-inch door is what you do in a commercial, but in a residential, it's slightly smaller because it's the clear width that they measure. But that's all in the state building code. That will be reviewed by your building department.
Okay. Are there washers and dryers in each of these units, or where in the building? I didn't see on the plans any place.
There are washers and dryers in every unit. There's a closet for them.
Then what kind of energy efficiencies are you putting into this, so this stays viable over time? Are you looking for any LEED certification?
I can have the developer speak to that.
So we've worked on a number of LEED projects, and we've incorporated some of the features in the site design that would apply to the LEED project, but at this time, Scott, you confirm, I don't believe you're planning on certification of the project itself, just following some green techniques as best we can with rain gardens, reduced...
Plantings.
Impervious areas and plantings.
Okay, so you're not doing anything else to make it easier to air-condition or heat, or looking at heat loss or anything like that, that is beyond just the standard?
We are really struggling in the financial wherewithal, what's coming back, when, again, the water on the roofs, I really still struggle with. The green roofs and the water and the trees and the weight and the water, we're still kicking that around.
There was some question about turnaround. Is there enough for school bus turnaround coming into this?
Yeah, I would anticipate a school bus servicing this site would enter from Mitchell Road, utilizing Cochrane Lane, the right-in, a one-way street system with a pickup near the front entrance, then looping via Martin Drive and back to Mitchell Road again. So there would be no need for turnaround.
Okay. Let's see, I'm getting down to the end of the question. I think the last one is, is you want setback changes, so less green space, you want fewer parking lots. So what are we getting out of this? Are we getting public art? Are we getting flowers? Are we getting fountains? Are we getting benches?
I love all of them.
What exactly are we getting for giving up green space and parking?
Well, one is, I was expecting to donate the one-acre lot in the back as an outlot to the city, that we will not be, obviously it'll be donated, given back to the city, whatever. We want to run some dog trails, I want to be able to have some nice dog walking paths through there. But that was previously what had come down, the previous development, and I discussed with Mr. Franzin, is they had looked for less on the setbacks, and they were going to give the outlot to the city, and that's exactly what we expected to do, and what I expected to do. I will also say that when I first bought this parcel of land, it was looked at as a leftover remnant that nobody wants, and we can do kind of, there's nobody around there, and let's, you know, talk to the staff, it'd be an area that we could, don't have to worry so much about adjoining properties or imposing anybody. And so we're just trying to make and put a building on here that will work, and the performer will work, and the building itself will function and work. And that's really what I spent the last year and a half working on doing with all the folks you see here tonight.
Yeah, I think it's worth mentioning, too, that the area of lease setback is actually facing to the east toward the wetlands. There's really, you know, no adjacent neighbors that are impacted by that reduced setback in particular.
If that's something to show, it's over there on the desk.
Am I doing it right? What? If you'd also look in your packet, there's a landscape plan that's included. It's very heavily landscaped as a mature, it's going to be very nicely done around the perimeter of the building. The way the building is designed, it's on a pedestal, that's where the parking area is, and above this will be the, and you can see that in the rendering also, that the landscaping around this pedestal. Currently, there's a sidewalk that goes around the whole site that's not utilized at all right now. If you go out to the site, it's clean, barren, just grasses and sidewalk. That sidewalk does connect into the park system and the park trails, but this building in there, that'll be a much more walkable space. People in the apartment are going to use those sidewalks along there, and that's maintained with this all the way around the building. And as Mark, the engineer, talked about, really the open space around this building, it's really an urban design, and I would disagree with what Mike Franzin is saying, is that the building is, you know, really as a backdrop towards the park to the east, and then the open space to the south, and the west, and the north. The street is a fairly wide street. The vegetation around that street is very green, very lush. So having the impact of this building on this particular site is probably going to have the least impact of any place in Eden Prairie. I mean, you can see that by the number of residences that are here that are objecting to this project.
Thank you. Councilmember Aho.
I just had a kind of a question, a follow-up question on the parking studies that we've looked at. Seems to me that all the studies that we're looking at are parking related to, you know, June, summer, summer kind of parking, and I would think that parking in the summer is probably a little bit... is probably a little bit different than you had anticipated parking maybe in the, you know, cold months or the winter months. I'd think that there'd be possibly more people not at home, more people would be on vacation, you know, more people would not be concerned about parking inside potentially. So I'm just wondering, are the studies that we've looked at from this, I'm kind of asking this of city staff, is this, does this seem like typical parking that would be year-round, or is this skewed maybe because it is a summertime example or sample?
You know, it's a snapshot, is what it is.
Right.
At this point, if we had the time and the money, the way I do this study is I take a week in the spring, in the summer, in the fall, in the winter, and capture a couple of days around the holidays, so that you have more data to take a look at. So you could go at different days of the week and get different numbers. Part of the reason for doing this study is seeing the slide that Scott provided that said, hey, you've got a vacant parking lot. So we were trying to find out, is this actually true or is this not true? And this is why we embarked on this comprehensive study, to find out if we truly didn't need all the parking that we needed. It was much of the same approach that we took when we reduced our commercial parking requirements a few years ago, we based that upon actual data that we had in the city. Now, in a perfect world, if we had five projects that were exactly like Scott, that were already built, that you could go out and field test, this would be easy. This would also be easier if we had a three-acre site in our town center, because we already created an ordinance for that walkable environment for parking at one and a half per unit, but we're not in that particular area. And if you talk to cities, they're all over the map on their parking requirements, they're all over the map in terms of the reasons why they do it. Some people are more exhaustive in their research, some people do less research, not criticizing how they do it, they make their own decisions, their councils are different here. All we can say here is this is how the parking is being used, based upon the use of these buildings, which are essentially ninety-three percent one and two bedrooms plus dens plus dens, and three percent studios. Their project is twenty percent studios and eighty percent one and two bedrooms. So we don't have an apples-to-apples comparison. So we're making our best judgment call on what we need. What we found in going out and looking at this, and I did model the way, so it's important for the city manager to hear this, that I went out in the morning to inspire my staff to go out there at other times of the day, that I counted the parking spaces first, got up early to look at it. And so it was kind of surprising to me that we had kind of a variation, we weren't sure exactly why. What we learned from this, if this is the actual utilization rate, you still have to factor in some need for guest parking. And if you get into the summer, and some of the apartment people that we talked to said, their parking is typically lighter in the summer than it is in the wintertime. You have to take into consideration, people take vacations, people travel for work, these were done on the weekdays, it might be different on the weekends, so you could have completely different numbers. This is the type of study we probably would have done when we get into developing, hopefully we can get the grant from the council to do this, is a TOD ordinance, where we can do a comprehensive study on parking. You really want to do this for a code amendment, not be in a situation where we're acting to a waiver for this. So we were looking for something that would say, they're right about the numbers, and if that would be the case, we'd be the first one to say, let's go with the numbers. I just haven't found that yet at this point.
Thank you.
Yeah, and to add as well, you know, this project and the discussion of this project over the last couple of months, you know, has us thinking about that. You know, maybe, maybe we do want to do that study and take a comprehensive look, but I think it has to be a comprehensive look. When we were talking with Mr. Carlston and his group, we knew that, you know, any kind of code amendment citywide in a study is not going to be concurrent with their project. So we knew with this project, we would be dealing with a little bit of a gray area and a unique project.
Mr. Ellis, did you have some follow-up on turnaround and road space?
No, I think our, I think the Public Works, I think the Public Works comments were addressed by Mr. Anderson. It was the turnaround at Cochrane Lane and Mitchell Road, making sure that our snow removal vehicles, emergency service vehicles have a way to turn around, and then also five parking stalls being removed on the southern boundary, and that's to open up sightlines for driveways and the intersection. And maybe the third issue that can be addressed perhaps at developer's agreement stage is responsibility for snow removal of the on-street parking stalls. I know from experience that when we come through in the middle of the night, we're going to leave a windrow there, there's going to be a row of parked cars upset and wanting the city to come out and dig them out, and I think that should be a responsibility falls upon the development.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Case.
I think there are a couple of things that are bothering me, and one is just the general, I don't want to call it a mistake, but the issue with how something got published with numbers that we knew were different than what got approved in planning. So I, and I don't know, I'm just frustrated that we got to that point tonight, but we're here. What I'm also frustrated with, I, we hire staff, obviously, to do a good job, and we respect their work and their numbers, and so I do deeply respect the work that our staff has done on parking, but there, it sounds like even tonight, they'll be the first to admit that it's squishy to some extent, and they're trying their best to give us some objectivity to it. But when I even asked a question of, since this has this unique twenty percent efficiency component, rather than give me percentages out there of apartment buildings currently that have one bedrooms, two bedrooms, threes, give me a number of a two-bedroom apartment. I mean, that number has to be available seemingly, two-point-three parking stalls are needed for the typical two-bedroom apartment, I'm making these numbers up, one-point-four for the one bedroom. But I gotta believe efficiencies are darn close to one. Just intuitively, a little six-hundred-foot, square foot, one-room apartment is not typically going to attract two people, and I bet there's data out there on that. So that's my point of, we've got to be able seemingly to get closer to a number where the one-point-six-five could be really comfortable, could be really good, and we don't even know it, and, or we're looking beyond that and not recognizing that. And so that bothers me a little bit that we're, I agree by the way that we need to do this upfront so that we're not always caught in this predicament. The other thing, you know, to your question of what are we getting, we haven't had an apartment building project come before us for eight years. In fact, if I'm doing my math right, Councilmember Aho and Nelson have never voted on one.
That's correct, I've never voted on one.
So here we have an opportunity in an economy that's struggling, and we have a project before us that's tax-based. Not only tax-based, but giving housing stock options, lifecycle housing kind of options for people. We don't have efficiencies in our city. So I'm really, I've been, I've been in favor of this project in concept from the day one, just because, wow, it's here, we have this opportunity that's pretty amazing. So I've really done a little bit of work myself on the parking, at least to go out, I went out and I walked it, and I, and I've looked at that Cochrane Road, and the proponents coming in saying that they'll build somewhat, I guess you could call proof of parking, but they'll extend the road and add that extra lane, I think to put twenty cars in, I'm not sure if that's the number right, on the west side. So as I was standing there, the east side, if you've been out there, there's four feet of mowed grass, and then it begins to be about two feet of high grass, and then it drops, you know, and so if we were actually to put a full lane in there, you'd have to berm it up, it'd be quite a bit of an expense, I don't know if proponent would be interested or not, but, but just to even get the kind of parking that's like on a side street in front of my house, just add four feet, you can extend that, that road, four feet where I was standing on the mowed grass, and easily, you don't have to sign it for parking, but you don't sign it for no parking, and you can probably pick up another ten, fifteen spots. So I, my concern, I feel really relaxed about the total number of parking that's needed for the people living in this apartment complex. My personal concern is the Saturday night party concept, where, you know, ten kids in the efficiencies, whatever, decide all to have parties or something. That's where it feels like if we really, and it feels like it's doable to work with Cochrane Road, and then it sounds like staff has said that there isn't proof of parking opportunity in the one-acre lot that proponent thought there was and still thinks there might be. So it seems like that this proponent owns the corner.
But he's going to donate that.
Not only part, but there's part of it in front that I thought maybe could still be proof of parking, five to seven spots. Okay, that's still debatable, but I'm just saying, I think there's some opportunity here that we are so close. And so if we send them back, and again, I'm frustrated on that, but it seems like we've spent a lot of time tonight, and of course, we'll want to open up to the public to give public comment for the next one, but I really would like staff to see if we could potentially do a first and second read in the same night, if we've worked through the details, the problems, we've struggled through that, just if that works. If not, it doesn't. But, because if it gets to the point that, that we lose the entire project, which I'm not, I haven't talked to them, I don't know, but if we were ever losing an entire project because they have to go through a winter season or something, that's a shame, too, if we're so close. And that's my only thought and hope, is that staff can really sit down and do their darndest at our direction out of this meeting tonight to really make this work.
Okay. Councilmember Wickstun.
Yes, I wanted to say that I don't sense that we want to throw away the project at all, Councilmember Case, I don't have that feeling at all. I think that it's got great merit, and we know you're a wonderful builder, you're tried and true here in Eden Prairie, so those are all very positives. I'm sure you know that this will set a precedent in our city, and so we have to proceed with such caution. So I like the idea of looking at some of these things that we've talked about, having staff look at them a little more carefully, and, well, it has to go back, and it has to go back to the commission anyway. So I think they've heard what we're saying, is let's try to figure it out best way we can, but applying prudence, because, like I said, it will set a precedent. But there are things that you bring up that are excellent questions, like this is a new way of building for us, that we would have so many efficiency apartments, which we've heard all those talks about the bulge in the python being the baby boomers, and, you know, we paid attention to the demographics that are upon us and that we will see in the future. So, all that being said, I think you see some thumbs up here, it's just we have to proceed with caution about how we do it. And the whole snowplow thing, you know, we got to figure that thing out, with if there are parked cars, where will the snow be? And then the party element, you know, where will those party guests park? So, but don't be frustrated, I don't feel like we're there yet personally.
Thank you. The other comment I would like to make is, you know, we did a concept review on this project, the first time we did it, and we were talking about numbers that were much lower. And so when this was presented to us in the last few weeks, as, as council members, and the numbers were up to nearly two hundred units, I immediately kind of felt like, oh my gosh. We went through this concept review, and what we were being shown is something so much bigger than what we had originally intended. And then I studied the plans and read the notes from the Planning Commission, and saw that you're going with a lot of studio apartments. And I know what the demographics are, I attend a lot of regional mayor's meetings and sensible land use coalition meetings, I know about the demographics of the community, but I wasn't sure that I was ready to see this type of unit in outer rings, not outer ring, but second ring suburb like Eden Prairie. I didn't know that it was ready. But now that I've met your team, and I'm very impressed with your team, there are people with a lot of experience, you wouldn't have the investor you have if they didn't have confidence in the project, you wouldn't have Ms. Helgerson talking about managing a project where she's concerned that there isn't going to be sufficient parking for her residents. And so I feel much more comfortable with this concept coming to Eden Prairie now. It's not the number of units, it's just the, the concept of all these studio apartments. Will it fly? Because I want to see it be successful, and your team has helped kind of assure me that it's going to be successful.
Thank you.
So this was helpful. But my understanding is we cannot vote on this tonight. This is, are we going to do a public hearing? Is there anyone from the audience that wants to address the council on this?
May I respond to that, if I may?
Yes.
So thank you for that, and thank you for your thoughts, and I appreciate all that. And I hope you can understand that the changing of the building has occurred over the evolution of the process. As I meet with the builder, I meet with the bankers, I meet with the performers, it's always changing. And it's, there's still a long way to go. I'd be lying to you if I, if I said I wasn't, because getting something up, there's a lot of people talking about doing apartments now, but it really does have to fit in this perfect box. Everything has to work. And, you know, from the type of construction to the design, this, you've seen originally, it had a scissors ramp of three levels. Weiss told me they're not going to touch the building unless I get two flat levels. Now, we just haven't done it, we know we can do it, but you know what? We don't know that for fact. And if we're putting our money in our name, you know, helping out, we're hiring them to build it for us, they want a building that's going to be successful, and they said, we're going to have ramps, you enter one way here, one up here, we're not doing the scissors ramp, just because we're not familiar with it. And I, I have to respect that. But then I just changes, and I meet with Stephen Scott, and they're telling me, here's the units you got to have. And to answer the questions about the cars, we're making assumptions that the parties aren't going on right now when you're over at those buildings. You know, they are. We're making assumptions because of weeknights, those twenty-year-olds aren't partying right now at Water Tower Plaza, my kid lived there, and they do. So they are going on now. So as much, I think that stigma, and that's really why I brought Cheryl Gordon in, is I really think that Eden Prairie is ready for, and I don't want this connotation of when I say kind of a hip, fun building, but I do want a building that people really think is, is great, newest, fun, not just a apartment building, but one that is really cool, in a fun way. That I think when we travel, and you know, you go to a western hotel, or you go to, I mean, you can get ones that have a nice feel to it, and that's really what we're shooting for. And Councilmember Aho, the, I purposely did the parking study on the Monday night at ten-thirty PM before school got out, so that I would catch everybody before they went on vacation, and that was the whole reason I did it that night.
Thank you. Was there anybody from the audience that wanted to address the council? If not, we need a motion.
What, what is the motion specifically?
Well, yeah.
To continue.
To continue the public hearing.
Just before that, I guess I would like to make one more comment, too. I don't mean to sound negative about the project either. I am very excited about the project, I think Eden Prairie needs more apartment space, I think the project looks fantastic, and I'm thrilled that you're considering building an apartment in our, in our community. So I'm not trying to, you know, be negative about it, I want to work with you, I want to come up with a project. I think we just, I think our council is very intent on making sure that when we do things, we do it in a, we do it in a very good and proper manner, we follow the process, and that we make things happen that are going to be successful, not only for the developer, but also for the community. And I think we're very committed to that. And we do respect your time, and also, you know, the timeframes, the timetables that you're, you're under, and we'll do everything we can to try to accommodate that and help you. We don't want to be a stumbling block for you, we want to be a healthy partner, making sure that you have a good project.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Nelson.
The, the motion is in the revised agenda.
I would move to continue the public hearing to the August 21, 2012 City Council meeting, and refer the one-hundred-and-ninety-two unit proposal to the Planning Commission to conduct a public hearing.
Second.
Any further discussion? Paul in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. And Ms. Helgason, if you could plant in the ear of Mill Valley Kitchen, I would love to have them come to Eden Prairie. Great restaurant. Thank you. The classes rezoning, are the classes here? Apologies for your long wait. If I, yeah, if I'd known that things would have taken this long, I would have moved you to the beginning of the public hearing agenda. Mr. Getzel.
Mayor, council, I'll talk as fast as I can. We have a rezoning of a single-family lot from rural R1 to R1-13.5 at 12491 Sunny Brook. The lot conforms to the requirements of that R1-13.5 district. Currently, the lot is non-conforming in the rural district, so the applicant had wanted to make some improvements to their property, and as a single-family home would fit well within the R1-13.5. So everyone felt that an ordinance for zoning district change to R1-13.5 on the half-acre would work best to allow for the improvement, and obviously for the property to fit into that zoning district. A notice was sent on July 5th to forty-six property owners, and the Planning Commission unanimously recommended approval of this rezoning.
Okay. Any questions for staff or of the classes? This is a public hearing, does anyone from the audience want to address the council on this?
Does anyone from the audience want to address the council on this?
Seeing none, I would move to close the public hearing and to approve the first reading of the ordinance zoning district change from rural to R1-13.5 on .5 acres.
Second.
All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Our apologies for making it wait so long for that.
Yeah, too.
Okay, the next public hearing is High Point at Riley Creek. Mr. Getchell.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. We have a request for a zoning district change from rural R1-13.5 on five acres and a plat on five acres into 12 lots on 9765 Sky Lane. This is a 12-lot, single-family subdivision and does conform to the requirements of that zoning district and the guide plan. The plan commission voted unanimously to approve the project at their June 25 meeting, and there are no requests for any variances or waivers. So following the public hearing, the request is to approve a first reading of the ordinance for the zoning district change and the plat, and direct staff to prepare a development agreement on this particular proposal. I was a little worried the project proponent had left, but they're back again. And if they wish to add anything on the High Point project, they're here as well to answer questions.
We would have moved you up if we just.
This is a public hearing. Is there anyone from the audience that wants to address the council on this development? Okay. Questions for staff or anybody? No? Okay.
Saying none. Just real quick, the stormwater treatment pond is being shared by the two properties, and that's all worked out. City staff is happy with configuration. Okay. And is it taking water from other properties as well eventually?
This pond will serve High Point and then the Meadows. Those are the two properties that are being served by it. We're happy with it. We're assuming things have been worked out with the property owners as well, so.
Perfect. But that is a good point, Councilmember Case. This and the next project, next public hearing for the other 23-lot subdivision, they are sharing drainage ponding. That's correct. Good point.
Councilmember Wixstrom.
Yep. I move to close the public hearing and approve the first reading of the ordinance for zoning district change from rural to R1-13.5 on 5.0 acres, and adopt the resolution for preliminary plat on 5.0 acres into 12 lots, and direct staff to prepare a development agreement incorporating staff and commission recommendations and council conditions, and approve and authorize issuance of a land alteration permit for the High Point at Riley Creek project, subject to release by the city engineer upon determination that the final contract documents conform to plans stamped dated July 11 as approved by the city council.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Wish they were all that easy, huh? Okay, the Meadows at Riley Creek, 2012.
Thank you, Mayor and Council, as obviously for talking about shared ponding. This is another subdivision in that same Beverly Sky area. We have a request for a zoning district change from rural, from rural to R1-13.5 on 10 acres, a preliminary plat on 10 acres for 23 lots at 9805 and 9845 Sky Lane. So this is a 23-lot, single-family subdivision. Notice of this hearing was published on July 5, sent to 27 property owners, and the planning commission voted 7-0 unanimously to approve this project as well. And I see on front row left, we have the project proponent as well. If you wanted to provide any additional information or answer any questions, the council may have.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council. My name is Steve Bona with Homestead Partners is our development company. Marsh Cove LLC is our development company for this project. So we have development companies for every, I apologize for that. Kurt and Scott are always trying to grab the most attention, and we have to sit in the audience. I don't have anything to add. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. We're finally there. It's been, this has been a long process for us with the two separate properties coming in a couple of different times. But we're very happy with the project. It's got a lot of attention. There's much builder interest, so.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
Any questions? This is a public hearing. Is there anyone from the audience that wants to address the council on this development?
Seeing none, I would move to close the public.
Wait a sec. Please state your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Jill Nielsen, and I live at 9787 Sky Lane. So I, my property touches two of these developments. And I just want to be sure that you got my letter that I sent.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So you guys review all that before you. Okay. I just want to let you know that the neighbors as a whole are very concerned about the development. And although there are not a lot of them here, when this started, everybody signed a sheet. I'm not sure if you got that sheet. It's been months and months since they did that. Well, I would say probably 75% of the neighbors.
It's part of the planning commission's stuff.
They're very concerned. And all of the ones that are directly touching this, the driver's property, I know are very concerned, so.
All right. Thank you, Jill. Anybody else? Okay, one more.
My name is Diana Hanline, and I live at 9790 Sky Lane. And I'm obviously one of the neighbors. And one of our concerns is, is that you have 22 homes or so going in on these two lots, and then you just, the other 12 lots that are behind that. You have 52 homes going in across Eden Prairie Road. It seems like a lot of properties, you know, a lot of new homes going in in this kind of economy. And we're concerned, I don't know who the builders are going to be on these properties, but our development is less than half full, and it's been five years. And of course, they thought it was going to be, you know, ready in three years. And it, you know, it doesn't look good. You know, you have, you build a home, you're there, and there's all these empty lots, and sometimes they're not very well taken care of by the builders. And so our concern is, to be quite honest with you, is do they have staying power? I mean, are you going to start these things and all of a sudden, they're going to walk away from them? And just something we just want you to be, you know, maybe a little aware of, and how many homes can be for sale on Eden Prairie at a certain price range? We don't even know what the price range is going to be on these homes.
Well, to tell you the truth, we're pretty amazed that we're getting so much development activity right now.
And I mean, I hope it all go, I mean, you know, we all hope it does, but, you know, it's a concern for us and our property values, of course, and stuff, so.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. I don't know, Ms. Jeremiah, or maybe somebody on staff knows, the developments off of Duck Lake Cove Point, was that the name of one of them? And can't remember the name of the other one.
Grand Haven.
Yeah. Now, those are about the same price range as these. And I remember when the proponent came to us, he had, like, people waiting in line to purchase those. Has that panned out that way?
Yes, those are moving actually quite well up on the Duck Lake area. And so I'm not sure what all of the differences are between, you know, the Sky Lane neighborhood and the fact that they've been a little slower the last five years. I can certainly look into that. I think, you know, we share the concerns. We don't like to see a lot of vacant lots just sitting. At the same time, there are a lot of, you know, improvements that, you know, come along with these developments as well. So hopefully, you know, in the long run, obviously, we get those improvements. But I do share the concern. We don't want, you know, a lot of vacant lots and unkept properties out there.
Okay. Thank you. Councilmember Nelson.
Do we require the developer keep the vacant lots at any level of, you know, pick-upedness and trimmed and such? Because, you know, easily, some lots could go a year, you know, in any development. And they're right, there's quite a number of these. So do we make some requirements that they, you know, have to keep them up even if the development isn't going as quickly as they might have wished?
Yes. My understanding is that they are still subject to our weed control ordinance, and they have to be kept mowed and that kind of thing. But it's still a little different look from sod and all the landscaping care that goes into the developed property. So it's, in spite of everything we do with our ordinances, there's obviously a difference to the neighborhood.
So if there's a problem, I'm the official weed inspector for the city. So we need help.
That's true.
All right. Any other questions? Okay. Is there a motion?
All right. I would move to close the public hearing and approve the first reading of the ordinance for zoning district change from rural to R1-13.5 on 10.11 acres and adopt the resolution for preliminary plat on 10.11 acres into 23 lots and road right-of-way. And direct staff to prepare a development agreement incorporating staff and commission recommendations and council conditions, and approve and authorize issuance of a land alteration permit for the Meadows at Riley Creek, 2012 Remford Driver Project, subject to release by the city engineer upon determination that the final contract documents conform to plans stamped dated July 11, 2012, as approved by the city council.
Second.
You can have it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Thank you. The next two items are related to precious metal dealer licenses. First is for Aurora Design. Mr. Getchell.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I can run through the two quick, and then you can open your public hearings and take action on both. That's correct. We have two public hearings for approval of a precious metal dealer, and according to our city, that's defined as any person engaging in the business of buying second-hand items containing precious metal, which is included but not limited to jewelry, watches, eating utensils, candlesticks, religious and decorative items. And our police department has done a background investigation on both Aurora Jewelers, which would like to come in at 11995 Singletree Lane, and Gold Money Express at Flying Cloud Drive. That's actually inside the Eden Prairie Mall. And so both background checks worked out. We had public notices that were mailed to 139 property owners with the Gold Metal Express and 22 property owners with Aurora Jewelers. So both of these items require a public hearing.
Okay. Thank you. Councilmember Nelson.
I just want, this does not include the copper sales that we all hear about so much, I assume, or it does include copper sales.
Well, I've heard, I've heard about the gold sales and the silver. I guess I'm not familiar with the.
Typically, I don't think they would buy.
No, I'm seeing the police chief saying no.
No.
They wouldn't buy gold, or copper, it's not a precious metal. But I mean, you would bring that to like a scrap recycler.
Yeah. Well, I just wanted to make sure. I didn't think it was that kind of thing, but I thought I would ask.
I'm hearing no copper.
No copper.
No copper.
Okay.
Copper pennies, maybe.
All right. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone that wants to address us on either of these licenses?
Yes. Seeing none, I would move to close the public hearing. And approve the precious metal dealers license for Aurora Designs Incorporated, DBA Aurora Jewelers.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Next.
Someone else? You want to do a public, two separate public hearings?
Okay. This is public hearing. Is there anyone from the audience that wants to address the council?
Seeing none, I move to close the public hearing and approve the precious metal dealers license for Gold Money Express LLC, DBA Gold Money Express.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Payment of claims, is there a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Aho.
Aye.
Councilmember Butcher Wixstrom.
Aye.
Councilmember Case.
Aye.
Councilmember Nelson.
Aye.
Mayor Tara Lukens.
Aye. Ordinances and resolutions, we've done the first and second readings. Now we have the class rezoning.
I would move to approve the second reading of the ordinance for a single-family lot from rural to R1-13.5 on .5 acres.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Appointments, Southwest LRT Community Advisory Committee, we had a resignation. Mr. Getchell.
Yes, Mayor, we had a, one of our members of our Conservation Commission is not going to be able to fulfill his duties on the LRT CAC. So we reached out to the two secondary or alternate representatives who both wish to stay alternate representatives, but we had a member of the Conservation Commission who did want to, our newest member, wanted to step up to be the primary representative. So we have that before you tonight.
Okay. Great. Is there a motion?
Move to appoint Stacy Beddison as the primary Conservation Commission representative for the city of Eden Prairie on the Southwest Light Rail Community Advisory Committee.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Report of councilmembers. Mr. Case.
Super fast. Just Councilmember Aho and I were privileged to help out with the Fourth of July celebration this year and just to congratulate Nicole White and the myriad of police officers and firefighters and just the numbers of staff and the way they coordinate to make this event come off. And I think by the time fireworks occurred, I don't know what our numbers were, but it looked high again. So it just is a really great civic event. And as we talked about at the workshop earlier this evening, both, I won't speak for you, but I know that we had the conversation, Councilmember Aho and I, that it would be a great thing to look at enhancing, again, the event to where it used to be in years past. It may not necessarily be a money budget item, and even if it was, it'd be great to look at that at some point because it is the civic event of the year, and I just think to start it at five felt deflating or something. So, anyway, great event. Second, just really quickly, you know, all of us probably throughout the years have had some anecdotal, business people occasionally come up, and I've had two in the last three months say Eden Prairie is a tough place to do business. It's expensive. And I've gone back and carried some of those ideas back and found out it's not exactly accurate, that statement. In fact, in many, many cases, it's exactly the opposite. So I wondered if we could maybe at the next meeting, maybe just, well, I think it'd be good to have it at a public setting. So come back on, it could be Mr. Getchell, just with some evidence and some facts and statistics that would actually show that in many, many ways, we're incredibly, maybe not least expensive, but we're very good at doing business here. In fact, our businesses are incredibly happy. And there are a couple of little instances, like sack and whack charges, particularly for businesses that have multiple sinks. So possibly a barbershop, possibly a restaurant opening up, where we might be hired because of our need to build infrastructure back in the 70s and 80s. That need is not here the same way it was. We made up for it by charging less on water. We have some of the cheapest water around, so we were more expensive on the infrastructure up front end. So, anyway, there may be, I want us to look at, are there things we might be able to do to become more business-friendly to new businesses? And also, at the same time, come back with this information of how good we are and then be able to market that.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Report of Public Works Director. It's too bad that this meeting has lasted a long time, because I think this is an issue that a lot of people in the audience would like to have heard about, so.
Well, not to belabor the discussion, but I did want to spend just a few minutes explaining that a number of weeks ago, I promised the council that we'd come forward with a policy on the use of the in-street yield to pedestrian signs, or as they're referred to around here as the Kowalski signs. And right now, we don't really have a policy for them, and they're not within the right-of-way. This would establish some guidelines of when, where, and why they would be installed. And I think it's important to remember that, or to note, the reason we're installing these types of signs is bring an awareness to the driver that they need to yield to pedestrians when they're in the crosswalk. A lot of people don't understand that. And so this is a tool to help reinforce that state statute. And what we're looking at doing is using these on a temporary basis. These would not be a permanent fixed sign. They would be deployed at certain intersections for a period of two to four weeks, and we'd rotate around the city. I would envision having enough of these signs in place to do three to five crosswalks here. And if you leave it there, over time, you'll lose that notion that there's something here I need to be aware of. And so by rotating them around town, I think it keeps that awareness fresh in the driver's mind, and I just think that they're going to be a more useful tool that way. So a couple qualifications I want to make is that we, through this policy, can install these signs at any crosswalk in the city, marked or unmarked. There are a couple of locations that we could not do that. That'd be signalized intersections or always stops, because those are protected already, they would not be eligible for the signs. And then the other instance where they would not is any street with a posted speed limit of 40 miles per hour or greater. And that's because these can become flying objects, which introduces a whole new danger. And this would be consistent with how the state of Minnesota applies these, these signs as well. So outside of that, we could put them really at any intersection. But I think to manage our resources, we will prioritize based on vehicle speeds, pedestrian volumes, vehicle spot volumes, whether it's a school crosswalk, marked crosswalk, there are certain things that we will use to prioritize where these go. But, you know, I don't think that there would be any intersection that we'd say absolutely not, we cannot put these signs up at that crosswalk, which gives us the flexibility, I think, to respond to the public's needs and their desires as well. So with this, we will begin ordering the signs, and hopefully have them implemented within the next month or so.
Thank you. Councilmember Aho?
Just one comment on that, and I've, I've noticed in some communities where they use, they use kind of a signalized flag for crossing crosswalks. And so they have a number, they have a little stand on each side of the street, where they'll have, you know, two or three flags, you know, short hand flags with a, you know, bright orange flag on it. And then as people cross, they carry that flag deposited in the other side. And, you know, that might be a nice thing for certain, certain intersections where you have, you know, maybe older people are crossing, or people that can't cross as quickly, and they might feel a little bit more comfortable in carrying a flag across and, you know, drawing attention to themselves, and might make it more comfortable in crossing some of those things. I don't think it would be appropriate for a lot of places, but there might be a few intersections where that might be applicable. Have you considered that?
Well, we, we actually have, and this whole discussion has spurred a larger discussion about pedestrian safety and other types of treatments that we should maybe consider utilizing here in Eden Prairie. This would be one good example. Another one would be the rapid flashing amber beacons, the pedestrian actuated beacon that, almost like an emergency vehicle, does the very quick wig-wag, the LED very bright light. I think that that's something that might have a useful purpose, and so we've actually started looking at a way of warranting these other types of treatments. And I suspect sometime this year, you might see another policy come forward.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Is there a motion?
I would move to approve the policy, is it, you want, okay. I would move to approve the policy on the use of in-street yield to pedestrian signs.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.